Item four, public hearing, Brisbane Baylands Planning Applications, Baylands Concept Plans, Brisbane Baylands Specific Plan, Case SP-01-06, General Plan Amendment Cases GP-01-06, GP-01-10, and Related Final Environmental Impact Report. The specific topics include other environmental issues, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, soils, seismicity, hydrology, recreation, energy, and related policy issues. Universal Paragon Corporation is the applicant. So I’ll note that we did have a study session that was public before this meeting where the council got to ask some questions, and now is the chance for the public to also ask questions. So staff report, please. And I do want to note, just for the public to know, that Councilmember Davis does have to catch a flight tonight, and so she’s going to be leaving at 10:30. So we’ll work as hard as we can to wrap up by then, but if not, she’ll step out quietly. So staff report, please.
Yes, I’ll turn the presentation over to Lloyd Zola.
Lots of different subjects tonight. We’ll start with energy resources. There’s a number of different sources of energy consumption, and we talk about energy consumption in terms of construction and then operations. And one of the questions that came up earlier was, and we’ll research this, how much energy might be used in terms of site remediation? Because that is one difference in terms of this site as compared to other sites in terms of construction, energy consumption. There’s also a, you know, operations are pretty straightforward as the use is there. But one of the issues that has been discussed a lot is how much onsite renewable energy generation would there be in the various different scenarios? And so that starts getting at what is the net energy use of the different scenarios? There’s a number of mitigation measures and other measures to reduce energy consumption. There are EIR mitigation measures related to air quality, hazards, greenhouse gas noise, dealing with limitations on construction hours, traffic. There’s also a requirement that would increase the city’s current standard of lead silver to achieve lead gold rather than silver. Now, a number of planning considerations as we deal with the energy resources. One is that when we talk about renewable energy facilities, they can either be ground-mounted, such as wind turbines, such as a solar farm, or they can be building-mounted rooftop solar. And there are also a number of rooftop wind energy generation facilities that seem to be popular in the technology corridor outside Washington DC up through Maryland. There was a study done looking at the renewable energy generation alternative done by National Renewable Energy Laboratory, which is part of the US EPA. And it studied feasibility of onsite energy, and it focused on how much energy could be produced, whether the sale of energy could justify the cost of construction operation. But it wasn’t a full business plan. It was looking at the siting, how much could be generated. It did not address the cost of land, cost of site remediation or landfill closure, and the effects of developing a large solar farm, what effect that might have on the balance of the project and balance of the site and its ability to pay for needed infrastructure remediation of their old rail yard. Recreation, we’ll talk about two different issues. One, parks. And in relation to parks, there’s a couple things to keep in mind. One is there is the Quimby Act, which is part of the Subdivision MAP Act that permits cities such as Brisbane to require dedication of land for parks or to require fees in lieu of that dedication. What the Quimby Act says is you can require up to five acres per thousand as part of your subdivision MAP Act unless you don’t have three acres per thousand population, in which case you can only require three. Now, the city also has a goal in its general plan that would get, look at eighteen and a half acres per thousand population, which parks in open space, which is a standard based on National Parks and Recreation Association. And that is an enforceable policy, eighty-seven A within your general plan. In the end, what you should look at as part of your determinations on the bayland are what is the appropriate amount of parkland in the baylands? That will deal with permitted uses, obviously residential uses demand and need more parkland than non-residential uses, but even non-residential uses have some need for parks. And then what is the appropriate configuration of open space? Where should open space be within the baylands? And there’s a study that was done for the baylands dating back to 2009, which is an open space plan or a public space plan done by Dangerman Associates that’s attached to your staff report. And this is what the open space looks like in that plan. Basically, the area north of the lagoon, mostly through the center of the site in open space, with some other open space areas throughout the rest of the site. We also looked at windsurfing resources, and that took, spent a lot of time looking at that at the Planning Commission. Candlestick Point State Recreation Area is one of the premier windsurfing areas, not only in the bay but in the world. And as you build large buildings upwind of that resource, it will slow the wind speed down, create turbulence. The environmental impact report determined that impact would be less than significant, that it would be the differences in wind, a couple mile per hour reduction, would be undetectable to most windsurfers, particularly intermediates and beginners, and would not impair the ability to launch or sail within a desirable area of return. The windsurfing associations raise a couple issues. One, that the city should have adopted a specific criteria. You really have no requirement to do that as long as there’s this threshold clearly stated in the EIR, which there is, and the threshold that’s being used is the same one used throughout the Bay Area as well as San Francisco used for Executive Point or Executive Park at the very same resource. There were also a number of comments received that said significant impacts would result in terms of, if you used an alternate methodology. Essentially, if had the city looked at salable days, and then they proposed a definition of what is a salable day, and would the development of the baylands reduce the number of salable days? There was an argument that wind tunnel testing should not have been used, and somehow the project description in the EIR was incomplete. The project description was all the information we had, and the modeling that was done in the wind tunnel was utilizing the roadway configurations shown in the EIR with the maximum amount of buildings at their maximum height, building out the entire site was actually modeled in a wind tunnel. Wind tunnel testing is very common even for large projects. It’s typically used because that is what the science is today, and it was actually tested at UC Davis, so this wasn’t somebody just constructed in their backyard. It was scientifically tested utilizing a well-tested and scientific methodology. There were a number of comments raised, and there are a series of master responses to the issues raised by the two windsurfing associations. And basic summary is that wind tunnel testing is well-documented, is in fact scientific, the wind tunnel testing was done in an appropriately scientific manner, and that the suggested salable days and the methodologies suggested by the windsurfing association would actually be less appropriate and less useful methodology than the one that was done. There was a request at Planning Commission meeting that a computer model be put together to analyze windsurfing impacts of development, and the city requested an independent review of what that would be and whether the feasibility of doing that kind of model. And a study done by Bennett White and Van Damme is attached to your staff report, and there’s a couple of recommendations there. One, the wind tunnel testing was scientifically valid, the methodology was scientifically valid, and really what it comes down to with all of trying to do a computer model is basically you’d have to model it two different scales, and the software just doesn’t exist to model it two different scales. One, large-scale macro atmospheric conditions, and then second, how you would, individual buildings and topography would actually affect. So there are some computer models that are used in San Francisco, for example, to look at a building, but they just don’t exist to try and match the two. And when you’re all said and done, any computer model needs to be validated and tested, and unfortunately, the only way you could test a computer model would be in a wind tunnel. So the ultimate decision at staff level and then at recommendation of the commission was not to proceed with computer modeling. In relation to biological resources, and also try and relate this to as we get into the mitigation measures, some of the drainage issues that are facing the baylands, is there’s a number of habitat types within the baylands, freshwater wetlands, tidally influenced areas, the lagoon, and terrestrial upland habitats. Part of the influences that occur within the baylands is nearly all of the baylands is fill. This is not natural ground. You’ll see that in cultural resources, Bay Shore Boulevard is named that because it was the Bay Shore at one time. And Ice House Hill is one of the few areas that’s natural ground dating back prior to the railroad. So the habitats that have emerged on the baylands have, I wouldn’t say opportunistic because some of them are sensitive, but they have fit in between the development that has occurred, but they are not naturally occurring habitats that somehow development encroached on. There’s going to be a number of impacts to biology with on the site. One, site remediation, landfill closure, and just grading of the site to get grades that would work for development, you know, realizing that Geneva’s going to have to come up and over the rail line. That’s going to result in the loss of nearly all, if not all, existing habitat onsite. So that provides, one, both a significant impact, but also an opportunity to create a mosaic of habitats that are more, fit better with the development and rather than some of the individual patches that exist. There have been proposals for trails up on Ice House Hill, but you have some sensitive habitat up there with plants and butterflies, and in the end, while there’s some things you can do to mitigate those impacts, one of the things to consider is are trails really desirable given the potential impacts on the biology of Ice House Hill? And then in relation to tall buildings on the site, I’m always amazed by this, but birds run into tall buildings. Tall buildings, especially where there are glass, and that’s one of the issues they have, I can’t remember which, in Texas, they just built this massive, or Minnesota, they built, spent hundreds of millions of dollars, they built this giant stadium, and birds are running into it left and right. But any kind of glass, unless it’s very clear that that is not natural or not open, becomes a major bird strike issue. So those are the kinds of impacts that would occur. There’s a series of mitigation measures in the EIR related to protection of Ice House Hill, avoidance of impacts to special status birds, but then also protection of repairing and sensitive habitats, particularly in and around the lagoon. And one of the issues in and around the lagoon is a prohibition on construction that would start digging up the bottom of the lagoon. And so one of the, by the time the biological mitigation measures are put together, there basically would be no recreational use of the lagoon beyond what is existing today. It just doesn’t, isn’t compatible with protecting the biology of lagoon. There is also a requirement for a project-wide open space plan to make sure that there is a configuration of open space and biological habitat, so as the impacts of site grading, remediation, so on, are mitigated, it’s done in a way that provides a long-term sustainable configuration of open space. And habitats provide north-south and east-west linkages between habitats, and then also a marsh wildlife and habitat protection plan, which ties to some of the drainage and water quality issues that we’ll talk about a little bit later in terms of use of bioswales and constructed wetlands as a water quality mitigation measure. So that would be tied to restoration of habitat in and around the lagoon and movement of water and drainage through the baylands itself. One of the questions that came up and is, you know, does the EIR adequately address the amount of wetland on the site? When the Corps does wetland delineations, those are formal delineations of how much wetland is on a site, they are a slice in time. So if a wetland delineation were done two years ago, it would be very different than a wetland delineation taken this spring. Wetlands will expand and contract over time, and so one of the things that was done in the final EIR was to look at wetland conditions over time going back to 2007 and how they’ve changed over time, and what was determined is that the wetland expression, or the wetland delineation, not delineation, that’s the wrong word, is the wetland configuration that the EIR used is based, pretty similar to the average of wet and dry years over a twenty-year period of time. When a formal delineation is done for Corps permitting, that will be a slice-in-time analysis. As we look at the planning considerations, there’s two primary habitats to be preserved. One is Ice House Hill, the other is Lagoon. And the opportunities that that significant impact of site remediation and grading provide is actually to enhance the biological values of the drainage through the center of the site in terms of natural channel potentially, using bioswales to carry water through the baylands, reconfiguring some of the discontiguous patches of habitats that now exist onsite into something that’s continuous throughout the site and flows throughout the site. And then also to look at, as in the Planning Commission’s recommendation, to cluster development to the north away from the lagoon and to maximize open space to the south, such as is shown in that 2009 open space plan. In terms of cultural resources, there’s a graphic showing the filling of the bay over time. You see the baylands, it’s the white area that actually was natural ground prior to the filling of the bay. And this is Bay Shore Boulevard in 1911. You can see the rail line and the rail yard and the bay immediately to the east. There’s a couple significant structures within the baylands. One is the Roundhouse, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. It’s severely damaged, it’s deteriorating, it’s deteriorating quickly. And so one of the EIR mitigation measures is to get a stabilization plan in place and get the building stabilized so it doesn’t deteriorate further while reuse plans are being done for it. The Lazari Charcoal Building is not a historic resource under SEQA. It’s not on the state or federal registers, doesn’t have physical integrity, there’s been modifications to it, but it’s still planned to be restored and reused as part of the baylands. The Machinery and Equipment Building is surrounded by but not within the baylands project site, and in the Commission’s land use recommendation, they do recommend integrating that ultimately as a community gathering place. Some of the other considerations and questions that were brought up in relation to cultural resources is, isn’t it a historic landscape? And the answer is no. What is left out there doesn’t have the integrity of the original Yale Rail Yard, and it’s been altered over time, and what would be learned from it is basically already known. So it does not meet the criteria as a historic district. There are, I mentioned, the plan to restore the Roundhouse Building, protect the historic context of the buildings, historic buildings on the site. Something that’s critical here, I think I mentioned it, is in the absence of doing something in rehabilitation of the Roundhouse or even arresting its deterioration, it’s going to continue to deteriorate unless something is done. Simply leaving it in place until it’s reused is not going to be adequate. Eventually, that, it won’t be able to be preserved. In terms of geology and seismicity, as mentioned previously, the baylands is fill on top of bay mud. It’s not a good platform for stable development. Obviously seismic, highly seismic region, there’s a lot of soils issues onsite, differential settlement, expansive corrosive soils, but also the potential for liquefaction is fairly high because of high groundwater and a lot of loose sandy soils underneath the ground surface. We know that there is a need for very detailed soils testing that would be done with each building, because what is not known and cannot be known is exactly where each building is going to be placed until you actually have building plans out there, but also what height of building. And so there’s, even with all the testing that can be done today, and there is a lot that has been done, site-specific, building site by building site, building by building testing is going to be necessary because there will be differential settlement. You’ve seen it at Sierra Point, and you’ll see it here also. But the key is that to deal at the general plan policy level, we know enough about the impacts or the issues that are out at the baylands to know that there’s a lot that has to be done with individual buildings. In terms of hydrology and water quality, there’s a number of water quality issues, both surface and groundwater. On the surface level, the issue is water rushing, running off from sites post-development and taking various contaminants into the bay or into the lagoon. And there’s a series of requirements in relation to various stormwater permits that the city has, construction permits, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES. So there’s a number of rules and mitigation measures in place to protect during construction and post-construction runoff from surface water that would contaminate soils, and that’s where the idea of utilizing bioswales, constructed wetlands, comes into place as part of the low-impact development standards that would be required. The other thing is in relation to leachate seeps and leachate coming out of the landfill, there are requirements and there will be requirements as part of closure for leachate collection systems, not only to prevent surface water from getting into the municipal solid waste, but also to prevent leachate that may be formed naturally or because of groundwater or the bay from that seeping out. So there will be requirements for leachate collection systems. These are some of the requirements, the NPDES. You have stormwater permit provision C3. There are, will be individual site requirements placed by the regional board, stormwater pollution prevention plans, from the horrible acronym, SWEAPES, stormwater management plans, and then leachate collection, as I mentioned. Questions had come up about how, as a community, can we protect lagoon water quality? And as I mentioned earlier, the biological mitigation measures would really prevent expansion of recreational uses in the lagoon. There’s a series of, all of those water quality protection measures, and one that I didn’t mention was integrated pest management that would require a plan for pest management throughout the bayland so there wasn’t just indiscriminate spraying of poisons dealing with, to deal with pests within the baylands. But all of those basic requirements that for surface water quality would deal with mitigation for lagoon water quality. There were questions about flooding. This is the most recent 100-year flood zones. Not a lot of the baylands is in a 100-year flood zone as mapped by FEMA. Those are the green areas. And then questions about sea level rise. What you see in the pink are areas that would be subject to sea level rise. The basic standards that have been proposed as part of the EIR and would carry forward to development would be 25-year storm, basically a 4% chance in any year, would be carried in underground piping, but the 100-year storm, the once-in-a-hundred-year, 1% chance, would be carried within streets, but that all buildings would be out of, would not be flooded in a 100-year flood. And the 100-year flood determine with tidal flow, so at high tide in a 100-year flood, where is the flooding? As well as with 100 years of anticipated sea level rise, because 100-year flood today is going to be a whole lot different than 100-year flood 100 years from now. And so that becomes the basic standard that would be applied to development throughout the baylands. With that, the Planning Commission’s recommendation is to, again, limit the amount of development in the baylands because of the concerns over a number of the issues related to soils and development. Keep maintaining major open space. It would be clustering the development, as you’ll see when we get into land use, the northern portion of the site, prohibiting expansion of recreation lagoon, the two open space plans, and then making sure not only that the Roundhouse is restored, but that all the uses surrounding it are compatible with that. And one of the things that we will talk about with land use when we get there is a land use concept for the area around the Roundhouse. So with that, if there’s any questions, be glad to take them.
Thank you, Lloyd. Okay, well, now we’re going to have a chance for the council to ask questions, or questions that haven’t been asked, or some things they’d like the public to hear questions of. Madison, would you like to begin?
I have two questions. So one goes back to the 2010, using that as a baseline, and I know you were talking about that as like the 20-year average. You were mentioning something about an average. And I was just looking over the minutes from the October 1st, 2015 Planning Commission minutes, and Dana Dilworth made a bunch of comments, and one of her comments was that the Water Board required the wetlands to be drained in 2010, which creates a problem for using that year as a baseline. So can you speak to why, what the rationale is in choosing 2010 for the baseline? Because it sounds like, based on what she had commented at that time, she was concerned about using that year.
Okay, there’s a couple of things going on. One, baseline under SEQA is generally set at the time of the notice of preparation. And the major notice of preparation that was sent out for the baylands was in year 2010, and that was the point that a new notice of preparation was sent out because the baylands was going to analyze all 684, 733 acres of the baylands rather than just Phase 1. And so that was also the point at which the city embarked on its major studies for the baylands, and so that is the reason that 2010 is used as the SEQA baseline, which is consistent with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The issue of permits in the baylands is that there were applications for permits submitted with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The issue of permits in the Baylands is that there were applications for permits submitted by the landowner that would have modified wetland area. There was a delineation done previous to that, and that was never followed through. And that was one of the issues that we heard a lot at the Planning Commission, that there was a permit that had never been followed through, and what happened to all the requirements, and shouldn't, how does that affect SEQA? Basically, what the EIR concluded is, one, the permit that had been requested and never implemented has lapsed, it has no effect anymore. It simply does not exist because it was not completed within the timeframe allowed. The 2010 baseline is an appropriate baseline to use under SEQA because of that notice of preparation. As you look at impacts in relation to wetland and how much wetland needs to be mitigated for, that was the reason we took that 20-year view of what was the most wetland you had out there, what was the least wetland, and what was the average. And so as you look at mitigation, you would mitigate in terms of average over that period of time, which is consistent with that which is in the EIR. However, what we did also was to lay out that idea of a marsh restoration plan as well as the open space and habitat plan. And then as you tie that to requirements for treatment of urban runoff and the use of bioswales and constructed wetland, you actually have the opportunity of creating more wetland out here of better quality than the patches that you've had before. And so that was all put together, the reasons that we believe the conclusions of the EIR are adequate and appropriate.
Okay. Then I have two more questions. So Clara Johnson also spoke at that same meeting. She submitted an attachment, and it's on page 97 of our large booklet there. And she said, "Ice House Hill survey should be done before any earthmoving work begins within 500 or 1,000 feet of the hill because the noise and the dust may discourage the threatened or endangered species." Can you speak on that? Because I didn't really see any of that, and I know that there are species, obviously, that are, that we want to protect. So how does construction affect those flora and fauna?
Very differently depending on species. Many species are fairly well adaptable. Other species are nocturnal and interact nighttime, so daytime construction have no impact. Others, the construction noise will push them away. So one of the things that, to have that as a mitigation measure, something to look at, would be reasonable. But it also depends on what kind of construction is going to occur, where, what is the land use being proposed? And so, yeah, to look at that kind of mitigation measure, that kind of requirement would be a reasonable thing for council to require.
Okay.
But it's, and it's a pre-construction, it would be part of a pre-construction survey and analysis.
Okay, so we would do another study to kind of determine exactly how to mitigate?
Yes, because a lot, yeah, because the other thing we'd want to know is particularly if you did want to see trails on Ice House Hill, you would do pre-construction surveys because we want to know exactly where, what plants are exactly where, and then route a trail appropriately. So, and then with certain other species, particularly avian species who come and go, and then in relation to migratory bird treaty act, pre-construction surveys are fairly routine.
Okay. And then my last question is related to the roundhouse. I know that you briefly went over creating a plan even before there's heavy construction on the site, just to get something in place to make sure that that site is stabilized because it is deteriorating quite quickly. Is there any way that that can be sped up, like even before anything is really approved? Because time is of the essence with that structure, and I'm just concerned that as these things take a lot of time for the council maybe to come up with an agreement about what they'd like to see, that the longer that that takes, the more at risk that structure is.
Exactly, yeah. And that's something that could be done. To create the plan is far easier than implementing it because you could on your own create the plan. Implementing it on private property would be a discussion you would need to have with the property owner.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Clark?
Thanks, Madison. We can pick up where we left off in the break in regards to the lagoon. So there was a passage in here, it's on paragraph two of the staff report, page 17, where you're talking about potential non-point source pollutants. It's the last sentence, include products used in landscaping. Talks about pesticides or besides fertilizers, and oil grease and heavy metals from automobiles. What do you mean, heavy metals? Like, you know, like lead?
Brake pads.
Huh?
Yeah.
Lead, yeah, okay, brake pads?
Yeah, you get, yeah, some.
Asbestos and lead and?
Not asbestos anymore. It used to be.
Mercury? Not mercury. But I mean, those are heavy metals.
Yeah. There will be some heavy metals that come off, but basically from brake pads are the major thing that occurs. And you'll see, it's the black soot that you get there.
Yeah. What is, what is it?
I have to look at what the specific metals.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, to me, heavy metals are more like, you know, like I said, lead, mercury, stuff like that, you know? There's like a whole categorization of it.
It's much broader than just the really scary stuff.
Yeah, okay. Also, in regards to the lagoon, Randy, we talked about that, about monitoring on it, you know, what we currently, we're monitoring the leachate right now? We have some kind of baseline?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. And then going forward, how do we monitor? Is it periodic checks and stuff like that that we do?
You would mean under a proposed development plan, sir?
Yes, just either proposed development or just monitoring going forward. But, you know, what we talked about earlier is that that area next to the lagoon is probably the most, I don't know what you call it, untouched, or the most recent resemblance of a garbage dump. Because you don't go down, you go down just a few feet and you're in garbage. There's been no fill put on there or compacted or anything like that.
Right.
So, and there's no slurry wall in there. So, you know, my concern is, is the leachate coming out, you know, as activity starts happening. We talked about that, the compaction. So just going forward, exactly, do we have any type of plan of how we're gonna monitor that or look at that, or is that something that we put into a development agreement?
Well, certainly, sir, if there are gonna be a development agreement, there would be a Title 27 landfill closure that would be required. And the regulatory agencies involved in that, both CalRecycle and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the local environmental agency, which is, or the lead enforcement agency, rather, which is San Mateo County Environmental Health, would all impose requirements on that. And those requirements would include sampling for leachate to ensure that leachate was not migrating off the site.
Okay. And just on the, I'm gonna jump forward to the Planning Commission recommendation because they're recommending 1 to 2 million square feet of building area. Trying to conceptualize in my mind how much that is. So the only place I really have to compare to in Brisbane is maybe either Crocker Park or Sierra Point. And I think Sierra Point's probably the most relevant. And if you don't have the answer, that's okay, you can come back and get it. But A is how much development is current, square footage wise at Sierra Point? And B is, I know we have a couple of approved projects, maybe a half million apiece on those, so I know that's at least 1 million. How much vacant area would then be approved for development? And then what would the total area of development be allowed at Sierra Point? And then what's the total acreage there? And I just want to have those numbers to kind of have some kind of comparison of what we're looking at.
Right, and we come back with those numbers. The 1 to 2 million square feet is an increase from existing.
Is what?
An 1 to 2 million square feet of building increase from existing within the Baylands.
From, there's not much existing out there, is there? How much is there?
You've got recology, industrial.
Or recology included in that?
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't really clear, is what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
That wasn't really clear. It sounded like it was more like 1 to 2 million.
Total.
Total, you know?
Yeah.
So if, yeah, if we can kind of clarify that.
Okay, increase. The other thing I'll compare it to are the assumptions in the general plan, EIR, about what buildout of the Baylands would be in terms of numbers of square.
Okay. And then one of the other recommendations is, they're talking about reducing the number of buildings, or substantially reduce potential impacts on windsurfing resources. Do they not believe the report, or what was going on there?
Yeah, and they went through the same discussion that we've been through tonight in a lot more detail. The issue is that there's a vast difference on what the impacts would be of 4,000 dwelling units and 6 million square feet of building area, or 8 million square feet under the CPP scenario, the Community Prepared Plan, as opposed to adding 1 to 2 million square feet with much shorter buildings. And in the commission's recommendation, there are not buildings, you know, taller buildings up on the higher point of the site, the landfill closest to the water. And so their feeling was, at the commission level, understanding all the issues of trying to get more analysis. If all we're recommending, this, you know, the commission's saying it, is an increase of 1 to 2 million square feet, and it's lower buildings, fewer buildings, there's no reason to do a major study.
May I follow up on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please. On the Planning Commission's recommendation of 1 to 2 million square feet, additional square feet, that's in addition to what is currently allowed under the general plan. Is that correct?
No, what is currently on the Baylands.
Then was it currently existing?
Yes.
On the Baylands.
And that's laid out in detail in their, in their resolution? So I think you should have copies of their resolution.
Yes, yeah, we do.
Yeah, we'll say, this is the existing amount of square, building square footage on the Baylands, this is the addition, here is the total.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I guess, just to wrap it up real quick, I agree with Madison in regards to the roundhouse, that, you know, perhaps that's something, a conversation, I know that it's real important to the community, it's been brought up numerous times, but kind of get it shorted up because I know a number of years ago, it was probably 20 years ago, they had a fire out there and it just really, you know, damaged portion of the structure. And so, you know, I think as a cultural resource, that's a real important site.
Okay. Great, thank you. Clark?
All right, thank you. You know, just to kind of back on what you were talking about in regards to the amount of square footage, so, so of course, we're not dealing with recology's potential buildout, but recology's property is right next to 101, closer to the bay. It's kind of in that wind corridor. Was recology's expansion part of overall evaluation of the wind conditions that go out to?
Yes, when the wind tunnel testing was done for the Community Prepared Plan, it did assume expansion of recology.
Okay, all right. And then just the Planning Commission's recommendation, so that they, when they were looking at 1 to 2 million additional square footage, did that 1 to 2 million also include recology's expansion?
No. The way that, the way that they looked at it was to say, 1 to 2, that within the Baylands, including recology and its potential of expanding south, they are recommending a maximum of 1 to 2 million square feet of new building.
Top of that.
Yeah. And so recology expansion, which I believe is about a half a million square feet, new building or more, would have to be accommodated in that, or recology would need to come back as part of their application requesting an increase, which would be the more logical thing that would happen.
Okay, all right. Let's see, let's go through some of the topics that we didn't talk about during the study session. So on page eight, it talks about Ice House Hill and, you know, potentially colonizing Ice House Hill with native plants and hopefully with butterfly larvae. I mean, at this time, right now, at least from what I've been told, the, you know, the Kalipi and the Mission Blue are not found. At least there hasn't been scientific findings of those butterflies on Ice House Hill, though it has the capabilities of being great habitat if it's, you know, done right, I guess.
If I remember correctly, and I can confirm this, the plants are there, but the butterflies have not been, I need to check that.
Okay, all right. But that is, you know, I mean, that could be one of the things that's very important to the council, to put significant amount of resources to make it a better place, or a place for the butterflies to populate.
Yeah, so when we looked at the potential for trails and the impacts of trails, construction and so on, there would be a significant impact of just putting trails up through there and then having people hiking up the hill.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, we talked about the lagoon. You know, right now we have these big rocks around the edges of it. What's the feasibility of being able to remove those rocks as part of the remediation, you know, of the landfill site? And come up with some other type of way to keep the contamination from getting into the lagoon, but providing a much more natural environment than what currently exists?
I think those probably two separate issues. One would be, how do, how can it be ensured that leachate does not come out of the landfill into the lagoon? And that's really leachate collection at the boundary of the landfill. The second question is, how can, as a community, we create a more natural edge to the lagoon and not create a lot of erosion and be counterproductive at the same time? So one of the things that could be looked at would be the lagoon edge, how could that be stabilized in a more natural setting as opposed to the riprap that's there? But that riprap is there for a reason, to prevent erosion, which would have its own impact on the lagoon.
All right. You know, it'd be great if there's, if we could get some information on being able to have a much more natural setting around the lagoon, but being able to achieve the safety goals that we want to establish, not having the leachate get into our water system. I agree with my council colleagues regarding the roundhouse. Yeah, we need to do something sooner. I know that there is that fencing around the roundhouse, it's kind of loose and easy to get into. You know, sometimes, you know, I'll be out in the Baylands, I'll go for a run and I'll see the gate open, and there's a pillar that's been chopped away, you know, for the wood to burn. So it'd just be nice if we could establish a much more secure perimeter around Ice House Hill. You know, you talked about the machinery and equipment building. Who owns that? Is that a UPC property?
I'd have to check the ownership.
All right. I mean, it is a very, very cool building. It would be nice to see if that eventually, one day, can be incorporated into a community public space.
Yeah, when we come back with land use, I think that would be a good place to have that discussion.
Okay, great. You know, on page 12, you know, at the bottom, it talks about the shrink swell behavior of the bay muds. And then at the bottom of that last paragraph, it says- last, uh, paragraph, um, it says that one of the borings near Ice House Hill, you know, bay mud is located above the groundwater table, suggesting a possible higher shrink swell potentials. So what is, what is the potential risk of that? What was the concerns there that that could impose?
Um, okay, so shrink swell is a soil that, much more common in the south, you see it a lot. And where, when it gets wet, it'll expand. Then as it dries out, it shrinks, and so you'll see the, the cracked surfaces on, on top. California, we build with slabs, slab on grade. And when the ground underneath is expanding and contracting on a slab, it's pulling and pushing on the slab. So it's, it's, uh, the shrink swell problem is, uh, just the integrity of, of a slab, if it's right on it. Or, um, if it's underneath compacted soil, it's pulling and pu- it's just, to an extent, an unstable, um, platform.
So, all, everything's got to be really, I guess in this type of area, peers all the way down to the bedrock, and then that alleviates that particular issue?
Well, peers have their own, have their own issues, but, yeah.
Okay. Um, you know, during the Loma Priya earthquake, you know, fairly significant earthquake, uh, there are other Title 27, or there are Title 27 land closures throughout the Bay Area. Um, if, if you could come back with some information on, on how developments at these, um, in these areas fared, and, you know, or how they were able to withstand the shaking of that earthquake?
Yeah, and it's, it's nothing, nothing surprising. Um, some of the, some of the leachate lines, as they get shaken, you know, any pipeline in, in an earthquake can sustain damage. Uh, some cracking of the, um, caps. It's kinds of things you would expect, and not expect in an earthquake, as it's okay, but the kinds of damage that would occur in an earthquake are, are not surprising things. Cracking of pipes, cracking of, of liners.
Yeah. So, you know, on the next page, on, you know, page fourteen, you know, there's a couple of, in that top paragraph, you know, kind of dealing with, um, uh, you know, using the California code regulations to, um, you know, that the landfill cap must be maintained, talking about emergency response plans in the event that a post closure land use and/or structures on the site change. Um, you know, there's that concern of, of the city not being on the hook. And so if you could just kind of.
Okay.
Go into that a little bit, either tonight or bring it back, you know, that would be great to.
That's a city attorney question.
Okay.
We'll bring that one.
Okay, good, good, good. Absolutely. Um, you know, it talked about sea level rise. So Highway 101 divides the baylands from, from the bay. Um, I'd be curious to get some information on, on how, uh, how Caltrans is, is, uh, providing their, um, long-term planning to deal with sea level rise and protecting, uh, Highway 101 from flooding.
And there's.
That seems like a barrier that, that needs to be protected, thus helps the baylands to be protected.
And there's a, a more general study being done by BCDC, looking at infrastructure throughout the bay, and vulnerability of infrastructure in, it's not just 101, it's.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right.
Water lines, sewer lines.
Absolutely.
Treatment is, it's really extensive.
Mm-hmm.
I think also, just to add on to that, the, the county of San Mateo was also doing a vulnerability assessment. Is that in connection with BCDC?
That's in connection, yeah. Um, individual counties are doing studies in relation to the larger BCDC study.
Okay.
But San Mateo County is looking both bayside and oceanside.
Right.
You know, so, um, you know, Clark had brought up the, you know, the landfill site having the fifty-five inches per se. Um, you know, the former landfill is already raised, so it, it, you know, it stays in fairly good, um, safe conditions for the fifty-five inch sea level rise. But of course, you know, on your, um, your map right here, you know, the rail yard is vulnerable. So, um, if you can just kind of explain what the, what the potential height of the rail yard site might look like? I mean, I, I've seen like the rendition of the train passing through in this corridor, and, and soil conditions stacked on another side of, of the track. So how high, um, does the rail yard site go from lowest to, to highest?
There is a grading plan that's done, um, that is part of, proposed as part of the specific plan. And that's what we use as the basis of, um, anything having to do with height. So, um, what I can do is bring that back to you, show you the grading plan and how it works. Generally, the grading goes from the low point at the lagoon, going, raising up from existing height, going up towards Geneva. So that way, the streets that are proposed heading north-south can actually have intersections at Geneva, um, and then sloping back, back down. So it would go, uh, up from west to east to a high point, and then sloping back.
Okay.
Down slightly, because on the landfill, you can't get too far down, and then from north up. I'll bring that, and then we can show, I think there's some comparisons that could be made to existing ground, and give you an idea of how much higher it would be.
Yeah.
The way that the, um, flooding, and so we talk about sea level rise, vulnerable, not vulnerable, there, we're talking about flooding at, at the surface level, because as was pointed out in a number of the EIR comments, as the bay rises, you can expect the groundwater to also rise. So there will be some rise in, in groundwater that would affect, uh, landfill. And so leachate collection systems would need to be, uh, designed to account for any rise in groundwater also.
Okay, no, that, that, that makes sense. Um, you know, in regards to the rail yard site, are there any portions of the rail yard site that will stay at the current grade that we see today, or will it, will it all rise?
I think, well, at, at the far south, it's going to be pretty close to existing grade.
Okay.
Because you also have to, in, in terms of grading, and that's why we'll have to pull that out and show you. There has to be road access maintained to the Kinder Morgan site, so you can't just raise the site and leave them, you know, ten feet below.
I'm also just thinking of, of the roundhouse.
So the round, yeah, so the roundhouse, because you can't, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Picked up. So, um, we'll shoot, we'll bring that, that, uh, grading plan in, and we can show you what it looks like.
Okay. Yeah, you know, um, I, I recently had a conversation with, um, his name's, I forgot Ben's, uh, last name, from High Speed Rail. Um, there's a, a couple of workshops, and I, I hope that some council members can make it. There's one in April, I think they're both in April, one's in San Mateo, and the other one's in San Francisco. Um, and, you know, and so part of their strategy, you know, is to have a rail yard potentially in, in the baylands. And, you know, they're looking at either the east side or the west side, and I don't know how they could ha- have a rail yard on the east side, because of elevation of the soil. Um, and, and so that's why I was kind of asking about the west side, because their understanding is that either site would be at grade for what it is today. So, um, all right. And, uh, let's see. Oh, okay, the last one is, um, you know, with the Title 27, um, landfill closure, um, that would only be done during the non-raining season, correct? And, and how long of a, a process would you see happening to, to, to start the remediation and, and then officially close it?
That, I don't know how long that would take. I, I could check that, this.
Been almost fifty years.
All right.
If we go by current?
Yeah.
Straight, straight line, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know how long it takes, but I know once they, uh, start taking dirt down and get close to the, uh, municipal solid waste, it has to be capped.
Quick.
Pretty quick.
Terry, questions?
So again, for the public and for the council's information, I'd like to see a sample Title, Title 27 closure procedures and implementa- implementation plan on what would be needed, and how much, how that would be accomplished, and what would be required. I think when we were at the end of our study session, we sort of got on a separate track, but to follow up on, on Councilmember Conway's comment, the, the current soil that's on the landfill site is, um, not been engineered. So it needs to come off to get to a, some level for the closure to take place. And I'd also like to, um, request, because in a couple of the areas, it's, talks about, um, scenarios that may not require Title 27 closure, and what those scenarios of whether it's no development or development, um, when that would be applicable.
Okay.
That no closure of the landfill would need to take place. Um, in our packet, we have, um, the Baylands Draft Public Space Master Plan, um, dated June of two thousand and nine. And this is not a, is this a plan that has been adopted by Brisbane, or is this, um, part of the, uh, EIR?
It was not formally adopted. Um, it was prepared to sort of assist in the, um, uh, planning process for the city.
Okay, so since two thousand and nine, this is still just a draft conceptual plan, not something that's in our general plan or part of our, our.
Correct.
Operating bug.
Correct.
Procedures. Okay, that, that wasn't really clear. It didn't tell us if we had approved that or not. Just trying to get my questions asked here. Um, we talked about, you talked about the lagoon, um, and water quality, and I know we're talking about the leachate that's coming, which is, I assume mostly fluids, um, or potential fluids coming into the lagoon. But do we, um, have we taken water quality samples? I know that when we heard about the other plan that was for the old VWR, we didn't have, um, good data for the water quality or the soil in the edges of the lagoon. And I'm wondering, I didn't see anything in the EIR that addressed, um, the current conditions of the sediment that's coming out, um, from construction activities, or, or how the sedimentations, um, going at the west side of the lagoon.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm not sure if we have data to, um, ensure water quality, or how we're gathering that, if we haven't had access to those shorelines.
Okay.
And then on page seventy-four of the Planning Commission report. Nope. Sorry. Fine, so I can quote you here. Too many papers.
What page is that, Terry?
Seventy-four. Um, it states that, um, all of the development scenarios would result in significant impacts because of the reconfiguration of the Title 27 landfill closure. So all of the biological resources, other than the lagoon, basically on the ground would be sort of scraped clean, and then tried to be re-manufactured into the system.
Yeah, I think realistically, when you look at it, um, by the time you're done with, uh, capping the landfill, uh, and then remediating the entirety of, of OU1 and OU2, trying to save some of the small remnants, especially if ultimately the land, not the landfill, but if the, uh, rail yard needs to be raised to create a cap, um, you know, there's going to be an issue. So the safe, what we did is look at a worst-case analysis as part of the EIR, which is, um, all of it gets, gets removed. Now, as part of, um, remedial action plans and a landfill closure plan, you could look at, are there potentially areas that would not be impacted? But I think by the time you were done, even the landfill, with extending Sierra Point Parkway up to, uh, Geneva and up to the freeway, there's very little that actually could be preserved in place. And so that was the reason we came back and said, a project-wide open space habitat restoration plan would be, uh, the best way to go. And even, even if you could save individual small areas, I think you would still want to go with a, a large-scale plan to get continuity to the open space and habitat areas.
Okay. And then I see that we had a letter from, um, I want to say Bio Habitat, and I could have that wrong, that came today, introducing themselves, um, Bio Habits. And in the Planning Commission report, um, they stated, in the Planning Commission report, that Bio Habits was going to come to the Open Space and Ecology, and do a presentation on what their, uh, expectations were for the site, and what their vision and goal was, and that the Planning Commission requested that that perhaps be a joint, uh, meeting with the Open Space and Ecology. And I'm wondering if that took place, or if we have any other documentation from Bio Habitat?
I do not know. I can check that.
If I hadn't.
The meeting did not, no meeting did take place. There was no joint meeting. Bio Habitat's a consultant to Universal Paragon, in terms of context.
Okay, I just, um, other than that brief reference, um, in the Planning Commission minutes, I hadn't seen anything referencing them until today's, um, letter stating that they're working on the project. So I didn't know if we had any more information on what their, what their goals and aspirations were for the site. And, let's see. I think the other questions I have, some we answered in, or talked to in the study session, but I think that I'd rather wait until after public.
Okay, great.
Address.
Thank you.
Well, I have a few questions, but we've certainly covered a lot of ground. Um, so we've talked about Ice House Hill and the, the butterfly habitat, um, not the butterflies being there, but the, the plants. Um, so is that part of the HCP that has, you know, separate rules?
Physically, it's not part of the HCP. The HCP is the other side of, of the highway.
Okay, so that, so if, if that were developed, it would not have any of those requirements?
It would not have those requirements, but we'd want to make sure that whatever occurs within the baylands would not impact the HCP on the other side of Bay Shore.
Okay. And you had mentioned that there are, that, that, there are concerns that if there were trails placed up there, that that would disturb some of the plants. Um, so how is it then that there's trails all over San Bruno Mountain, which is within the HCP and where the butterflies are, that how, how are we, how were those able to be constructed?
Trails are not necessarily destructive. Uh, they can be if you just go out there and say, okay, we're just going to put a trail from here to there, and what's the easiest route? So the mitigation measure, uh, would be to actually survey out in the field, use hand equipment to create the trail, as opposed to just running a bulldozer up.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of techniques that you use to create trails in some fairly sensitive areas. Um, and the other issue is, um, having a lot of. And the other issue is having a lot of, human presence can be disruptive to the species. In a lot of cases, where trails have been there a long time and there's a fairly stable number of people, there's an equilibrium that gets reached.
Okay.
Particularly if we're trying to establish and restore plants, we don't want people wandering just anywhere.
Okay. And then we also talked about the mounding that would occur in order for development to take place. So with respect to flooding and sea level rise, would it be the case then that if there were development and that was placed, you know, on top of a mound, would that decrease the risk of sea level rise because the development would be higher up than the current? I mean, well, there's nothing there right now, but say if it wasn't developed and it was made into a trail, would it be at the same level or lower than if there were development, which would be higher?
What you would look at is, the requirement would be the first floor level for all buildings be one foot higher than the hundred-year flood at high tide with a hundred years of sea level rise. So what we don't want to have is have buildings that are now free of flooding and a hundred years from now, you know, the first floor is three feet underwater. So that kind of raising of the building pad would need to occur.
Okay. And if there were areas that were not placed on mounds, how, would there be potential impacts to areas that are, you know, right next to that, that are lower down? Like, would it cause, I mean, I'm thinking like if there were development like near the roundhouse or near the train tracks, you know, in those locations, the train tracks wouldn't change, the roundhouse we talked about, you can't just pick it up. So is there any way that we've looked at or that we can look at to make sure that it doesn't, by raising the ground, you know, for the development, that it doesn't cause the water to then flow into a pit?
Right. So you would look at, with the rail line having 55 inches of sea level rise, you don't want to take a train through three and a half, four feet of water. So you'd have to look at, how does the rail line get protected over time, given that it cannot be raised? How does the roundhouse get protected? And so the grading plans will look at that. It'll be a combination of raising first floor levels as well as, I can't remember where there's levees per se, but also protective devices for certain areas.
Okay, so the grading plans will adjust.
Yeah, and the idea is, as part of the EIR, there's a performance standard that's laid out, this is the level of protection that needs to be provided for the buildings. And obviously, in relation to the roundhouse for reuse of that building, its first floor ground level has to be one foot above the base flood level. So, which means somehow keeping the flood away from it.
I see. And lastly, with respect to the lagoon, so the report, the staff report said that there's, you know, there's no recreational use plan for that because of the biological resources that are out there. So what are the resources that are currently in the lagoon? Or is it because of the contaminants themselves that are suspected there? What is the reason why there's no recreational use?
We have a little bit of both. There are fish in the lagoon, it's not large enough.
I've seen people fishing.
Yeah. I've seen people fishing and play, I wouldn't. There are fish in the lagoon, there is habitat in the lagoon, it's not spawning habitat, but there is habitat. There is a wetland fringe on the edge of the lagoon. And the other issue is not digging up the bottom, which would create, even if they were not contaminated, just the turbidity in the soil and the suspended soils in the water has its own impact. So the other thing that would be desirable would be to restore as much of the lagoon edge as possible into wetland habitat. And then as you look at long-term sea level rise, habitats along the lagoon are going to change over the next hundred years as the water levels rise.
Okay, great. And I think what we talked about in the study session, you know, that during the construction, there could be some runoff of stormwater of, which would potentially have, you know, contaminants in them that were, you know, brought to the surface through the construction. So what are the mechanisms that would be used? I think we talked about stormwater protection, just want to let the public know.
Yeah.
How would we ensure that by having the construction, that the runoff doesn't then enter the lagoon?
There's a series of requirements at construction sites for containment of soil, for elimination of erosion. So there's stormwater permits, there's construction permits, there is a review of the grading plan, there are things that are put in place to even keep trucks and vehicles move in and out from tracking soils out. And so that all becomes part of the review of the grading plan, which would be a city approval based on the series of regulatory requirements to prevent erosion and off-site contamination.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we have a number of cards, and I just want to remind the public, thank you, that each speaker has five minutes. There will be the green light that'll come on, and then when there's one minute remaining, a yellow light will come on. And when the red light comes on, that means your time is up, and we ask you to be respectful of the time limit so that we have a chance for everyone to speak. So we'll start with Chris Hart.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. Council members, I came with a bit of a script already, and you've covered so much of it already that I'm just really glad to hear what you said to your awareness about the cultural resource that is the roundhouse. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things tonight to talk about the culture that exists from a human perspective, the skills and the trades that were practiced out there, and to not let those become forgotten and just think solely about the building. So as we know about the building, it's unique, it's, used to be 200 roundhouses in the state of California, three of them on the peninsula, this is the only one of its type. And when the Southern Pacific Railroad developed the Bay Shore facilities, they advertised a region where work was plentiful and the living conditions were favorable. These people were coming from across the country to Bay Shore in the early 1900s to Visitation Valley, Brisbane, and South San Francisco became the homes for thousands of people who worked on the railroad and in the shops out here. These tradespeople with their hand tools, they were accomplishing repairs that really seemed foreign to us now. They were shaping and turning metal, fitting pieces together that would turn at hundreds of revolutions per minute or under pressure. And these are just generally understood tasks that people did. They safely lifted a 200-ton locomotive off of its frame in one building and would check cars and railroad locomotives for abilities to brake, come to a stop in another part of the yard. Reusing materials was really common, and that was really more about the frugality of the railroad than the common work practices that we would use now, you know, pre-cycling and other such words. So currently, the roundhouse and the tank and boiler shop, as you know, we're calling Lazari fuels, the sole remaining buildings on the whole site. The tall erecting brick hall and the steel-sided car shops, the power plant, yard tower, cafeteria, and the clinic, those are all gone. And as I said, we were addressing cultural resources, cultural equity in this section of the EIR. And I'm really glad to see, you know, I've been commenting about preserving and protecting the roundhouse and doing it quickly. But my real reason for coming here tonight was to point out the skills and the ingenuity of these workers and what might not be remembered should we not educate people through interpretation and examples of what was done there. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is that the preserving the culture and the skills, the actual heritage, working on equipment, working on trains, showing people how these things worked, how they changed our society, how they improved our economy, all the effects of what happened out here at Brisbane is properly represented in the future. So let the legacy of skill and determination live and enrich the lives of people for generations to come. Thanks very much, and I gave Ingrid a copy of those slides for your folder.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, Chris, I just want to thank you so much for your dedication to this. You know, it's great seeing you out there on your little site trying to restore that engine.
Fixing it.
Absolutely. And, you know, I mean, that's the type of passion that I think is really important in the planning of the baylands. You know, I just want to share with you, you know, someone had shared with me an old roundhouse that was repurposed in Vancouver, British Columbia.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just a great example of what can be done, where it's, you know, it's got a new purpose, you know, it respects the history of the site, but then it's a great destination for people to interact and, yeah, it really enhances that particular area of BC, so.
Yeah, thank you. There are places like that everywhere, and definitely more ideas to share with that in the future. So again, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Dan S., I'm sorry, I can't read this, Siskind, Dan Siskind.
You did a good job. Thank you, Mayor Lou, and members of the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I represent the Candlestick Preservation Association and a number of windsurfers, many of whom are here this evening. And I wanted to thank you for your attention to the issue of windsurfing at the site. I think that it's, it was said in the earlier presentation that this is a very special site. The wind at Candlestick is a very important resource to us as windsurfers, and the construction of a large development upwind of the site would, pardon me, would likely affect windsurfing for generations to come. So a couple of the points that were made that I wanted to address, one was that the Planning Commission has recommended a relatively small development, I think 1 million to 2 million square feet with smaller buildings.
You can stick into them.
Oh, sorry. So the smaller development with lower buildings is something that we're very much in favor of. One of the things that we would like to see flipped is that in the, in the open space plan from 2009, as well as in the Planning Commission's report, they have a lot of development at the northern end of the site. The northern end of the site is upwind of the windsurfing area. So we launch closest to the old stadium, sail out towards Sierra Point, but it's really that area closest to the old stadium where most of the windsurfing occurs. So if major development is done at the northern end of the property, it's very likely that that will have a more significant impact on windsurfing than construction at the southern end. So there's a couple of things that can be done. One is obviously to move larger buildings farther south in the project. The other is to make sure that structures that are built are built closer to the hills than to the bay. That gives the wind more time to go over and then come back down to the water, so it will have less of an impact on sailing. As has been mentioned several times, there are a lot of different options that you're considering, and so it's hard to, it's hard to look at the specific impact on windsurfing before specific plans are in place. So one of the things that we would like to request is that no matter what plan goes forward, there be another look at the impact of that specific development plan on the winds at Candlestick, and that it be done in a scientific way and in a way that takes into account the experience of windsurfers so that we're looking at actual impacts. I think that there was, there was some discussion before about whether or not salable days was a good measure, whether or not percent deviation from the existing winds is a good measure. I think that through discussion, it would be easy to come up with a standard that would make sense, that would allow people to continue to enjoy this special resource while the people of Brisbane get a development that meets their needs. So thank you very much for the privilege of addressing you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I have two different topics that I'm going to be speaking on, both geology and seismology plus hydrology. So do you want me to do two different sessions?
Yeah, you fill out two sets, but you can group them all in one comment.
Well, if I can do that, I will, but I'm not sure I can fit that into five minutes. So anyway, so yeah, my name is Prem Lal, I am a resident of Brisbane, but I haven't always been here in Brisbane. And during the Loma Prieta earthquake, I was in San Francisco, and I had the pleasure of being in a structure built on landfill during the Loma Prieta earthquake. So I wanted to relate some of that experience to you this evening because I question the wisdom of building on landfill. The reason I'm saying that is because the structure that I was in was a concrete, reinforced concrete building, and it looked very strong, and there were many buildings surrounding it which looked exactly the same as that building. But the difference was that my building was on landfill and the others were on solid ground. So during the Loma Prieta earthquake, there was so much motion in my building that in my apartment, all of the dishes came flying out of the cupboards and smashed all over the kitchen. I had an upright piano which was next to the wall, and it was tossed about two or three feet away from the wall by the motion of the building. And everyone in the building, from the bottom to the top, was forced to evacuate for a period of about three or four days and stay with other people outside of the building because they weren't sure the building was actually safe to live in. And they had to go in with inspectors to tag and see whether people could actually live there again. And so that building was so different, the results of the earthquake was so radically different for that building from the others that were on solid ground, that a lot of people questioned whether anybody should be living in that building anymore. Ultimately, they allowed people to move back in, but I wouldn't want to be in that building when the next earthquake hits. So I really wonder whether it makes sense to be building on landfill which shifts and buckles beneath buildings. And I think another example is the Millennium Tower, which is also built on landfill and which is now leaning and eventually is going to have to either be destroyed, or I'm not sure what solution they're going to have to come up with, but that's yet another example of a building on landfill. So if you do choose to go forward in building with, in building on landfill, you have to ask yourself, how deep beneath the surface are you going to have to drive piles in order to reach something solid? They didn't go deep enough with the, deep enough with the Millennium Tower, and that's why they're having the problems they do now. And then you have to ask yourself, how long is it going to take with all of these pile drivers in order to reach solid ground beneath all of this garbage that is landfill? And how many years will Brisbane residents be listening to these pile drivers, piling, driving piles, driving piles, all night long perhaps? What kind of life is that? It's not much of a life. So now... So now, secondly, I have two articles. The first one is on sea level rise, so does this work for that? Okay. Okay. So the second article is about the geology associated with buying property that was literally a dump. That's the name of the article. Now, I'm not going to read this entire article, but I am going to touch on a few points that it makes. This is from approximately five years ago. And so the person who wrote it is named Steve McLendon. He's well-known in the field of real estate. And so someone asked him, is it a bad idea to buy a house that was built on a former dump? What should we take into consideration when looking at these types of houses? So one of the points he made is, in general, when asked on the subject of whether parks and golf courses and malls and college campuses have been built on old landfills, he said, in general, that's because landfill sites built after the mid-1980s were designed, at least in theory, to prevent significant environmental soil contamination. Older dump sites, like the one here in Brisbane, are bigger risks. And when discussing some of the geology features of the land of landfill, he mentions that residents routinely notice recurring odors or see old tires or glass popping up out of the land, and that heavy rains have been known to bring out unpleasant odors at such sites. And even sinkholes can appear for a variety of reasons, such as the land settling or arsenic and other chemicals eating away at organic materials below the surface. Moreover, some tests and news investigations conducted in the U.S. and Europe over the past 20 years have found a disproportionate number of cases of asthma and cancer in housing developments built over landfills, particularly where large amounts of chemically laden industrial waste were buried. And continuing, you will have to disclose, when he's talking to a person who's considering buying something that was built on a dump, you will have to disclose that old dump site to a potential buyer when it's your turn to sell. How comfortable are you with that? So please take that in consideration. And finally, he says, I must advise the person who asked this question and others to avoid buying homes on former dump sites unless they're certifiably sure all risks have been identified and mitigated permanently. Even then, well, all it takes is one scare story, valid or not, to do significant property value damage. So I will stop and then let somebody else make a comment and then perhaps come back later with the hydrology issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Prem.
City Council of Brisbane, good evening. I thought there would be oral communications, and that's why I was going to bring this up then. Apparently there isn't. But it does relate to the Baylands. I want to ask you to not take seriously the recent UPC survey that just went out. Again, bogus, biased, you know, it assumes there's housing going to be there. It assumes that. So it asks, what kind of housing do you want? This kind or that kind? I think you're all aware of the classic definition of stupidity, where you keep doing something over and over and over again expecting different results. For 25 years, they've been pushing housing, and it ain't going to happen. So I think they fit that definition of classical stupidity perfectly. In today's paper...
Tom, do you have any comments as to the topics that we're studying? Because it seems like your comments are...
Yes, the Baylands.
Okay. Well, it's not the entire Baylands that's on public hearing tonight, so unless it's specifically addressing the issues that we're studying tonight...
Well, why didn't you have oral communications today?
Oral communications isn't a regular council meeting. This is a special public hearing. So you'll have an opportunity at the next council meeting.
It might be too late by then.
So, good evening, councilmen and mayor. I pulled up the Bayland survey and...
Sorry, I didn't read the subject line again. I'm sorry, Tony. This is, it seems like you wrote Bayland survey, so that's not what we're talking about. That's not the item that's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
So if you'd like to make a comment on that, you're certainly welcome to do so, but that's, this is not the forum to do that. You'll, you'll have an opportunity during public comment. There's no oral communications on tonight's agenda. You can always, if you don't want to wait until the next council meeting, you can write a letter to the council, write an email to the council.
Okay. But yeah, basically, I had a two-minute refresher on what the survey contained, and it's all relevant to all of this, I'm assuming, because it was a survey, many questions were asked in many fields.
Right. You're welcome to make comments with respect to the issues that we're studying tonight.
Okay, well...
The survey itself is not on the agenda.
It's a city survey, isn't it?
How many people in here want to comment on the survey? Just two?
I'm, I have, it's just a two-minute presentation, but if you prefer not, I won't do it.
You know, I think, I think we could let them comment on it, Madam Mayor. I know, and I asked the city attorney if we could...
Well, perhaps if there's time at the end of the evening, but I feel like, you know, the focus of the meeting tonight, I want to make sure, because Madison has to catch a flight, I want to make sure that we get through the topic.
I just got two people, I think, that want to comment on it.
I'm fine with that, Laurie.
With them talking on this topic? Okay. All right, if my colleagues are okay with it, then...
Okay, it's...
Want to come back, Tom?
It's very brief, trust me on this, okay? The Bayland survey, I found it interesting, and it's just a refreshing course on all these subjects. 67% supported generating renewable energy, 67%. 89% wanted clean air protection, quality clean air. So if you want clean air, you're going to want renewable energy. That's sort of hand in hand. 90% of the survey responded preserving open space in wetlands. On housing, 1 to 500 units, 15% supported it. On, when you stepped up to 500 and 1,000 units, 13% supported it. And when you, when you stepped up to 4,000 to 5,000 units, which is being proposed by Universal Paragon, 2% supported it. That's very significant. And then when it came to zero housing altogether, 43% supported zero housing. 51% preferred any development, any new development to stay in the existing general plan. The general plan has no housing in it. And 51% preferred it to be, to stay in the existing general plan. And last but not least, because I'm over, it's over with, very, very important. The cleanup of the Baylands, the cleanup of the toxin, is the total responsibility of Universal Paragon. That was part of the purchase price when they bought the property. And for them to say that they need to have more development to cover the cost of the cleanup is not true. It was part of the purchase price when they bought the property, the cleanup. I thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Tony.
You were on the council then, Tony, huh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, would you like to come back up?
I'll pick up where I left off. There'll only be about another minute. But on today's, today's paper, Daily Journal on the Peninsula, right here on the front page starts out with Brisbane to Study Baylands. And frankly, I expected this room to be packed again tonight. But to quote Jonathan Scharfman here, he says, he considers the project ideal for long, underused, okay, it's been underused, formerly abused slice of land. Well, what the article fails to mention, and what Mr. Scharfman fails to mention, is that they are the landowners, and they are the ones that have been negligent on maintaining their property. That roundhouse is falling apart because of them. They have not maintained that property. I think the city should declare it blighted and use your powers of eminent domain to reseize that land, and we'll put up some, something good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you. I'm talking about energy, as usual, and particularly some of the history that goes into the wide public support that the renewable energy generation in the Baylands has. And that really goes back to 10 years ago when the Baylands was first discussed and we had this Have Your Say Day. It was a big, all-day session at the community center. About 70 people attended, and they were offering their vision and suggesting acceptable energy types. No potential density, how much development was suggested, nor was there any mention of the necessary cleanup of the toxic site. That wasn't part of it, just what would people like to see. Even though many people were personally aware of the contaminants buried and remaining in the bay fill. What was also well-known was the Candlestick Wind Tunnel and the potential of harvesting the wind power. That's what we were talking about then. We were all seated around eight separate round tables, and each group developed a consensus of desirable land uses. They included offices, light industry, hotels and retail, and every table stressed the use of wind power as an energy source. Then to follow up on that consensus, people got together for an informal Brisbane Citizens Committee that came to be called CREBOL, short for Citizens for Renewable Energy in the Baylands. Many residents indicated their support for this idea by displaying on their property a colorful pinwheel that you've seen. They were symbols of the clean energy idea. However, there were doubts whether there really was enough wind to power utility-scale wind turbines. So with the developer's support, an anemometer was installed to measure the wind. It did for a year and a half. Then the results were speeds slower than expected, or an average of just nine miles per hour annually. This suggested that an array of special turbines designed to work at lower wind speeds without harming bird life would still be a beneficial land use along the Geneva Extension Corridor. Next, we started looking at plentiful sunshine as a better source of electricity. It was determined that 100 acres of the landfill could be used for the photovoltaic panels, but again, in order to establish their practical feasibility, a proper scientific study was needed. So the city, with backing from our congressional representatives and others, competed for and won an EPA grant for that study, which was conducted, as you've heard, by a team of scientists from National Renewable Energy Lab. That study, according to my records, was completed in 2011. And it is an attachment, an appendix to the EIR before you, so it's there. They found it both environmentally and economically feasible. In addition, a strong downward trend in the market prices of PV panels then started, you've heard about that. And so the financial figures of that study were updated in 2014 and resulted in even stronger recommendation by the scientists. So this was a good economic use of that resource. And the trend, as you know, has continued, and the market for solar energy is now more profitable than ever. And I do hope that your economic session will really go through all that properly with knowledgeable consultants. The NRL team also recognized the advantages of the energy being generated so close to the PTE Martin substation. That's a real advantage to us that requires very little transmission costs or energy loss in a long transmission. And who would buy the Bayland solar and wind energy? Besides fully powering any new development, there would be enough to benefit the rest of Brisbane. That was the key. As you know, we now have the Joint Powers Authority called Peninsula in Energy, Madam Mayor, one of whose operating principles that you just heard recently is called investing in the community. That is helping the generation of local renewable energy or distributed energy, as it's called, in Seminole County, close to the PCS customers. Well, I'm done, but the sustainability framework also, the solar and wind farms will be a most appropriate way to implement those goals. They would also make use of one of the most positive impacts available from the Baylands. Because the Planning Commission has done such an amount of work and really heard everything, as you've also studied, I urge you to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Honora.
Good evening, the one-two Miller. Okay, I have just three comments, and they're all follow-ups, really. The first, the comment I wanted to make about the discussion about going from lead silver to gold, and then earlier you mentioned Councilmember Lance going to platinum, but even that doesn't go as far as the sustainability framework, because that's net-zero carbon.
Yes.
Even lead platinum doesn't go that high. So let's not get stuck up in the lead things and think that that's sufficient. Number one. Number two, we have to remember, which has been forgotten in the discussions at the Planning Commission and the presentation for Mr. Zola, what the general plan says about open space, open area. There's a difference. And it's important to note that the 2009 study said public space, not open space, because open space is what the city buys and owns and is responsible for maintaining. Open area is a public space that a private owner maintains and saves the city money, but provides that resource. And that was the reason for the difference in the 1994 general plan. Don't forget that. You don't want to get stuck with hundreds of acres of public space to maintain. That's expensive.
Or be liable for...
Now, or be liable for, exactly. So be careful. Number three, I wanted to follow up on a conversation with Councilmember Conway and the city engineer, Rialt, we're having earlier today, and that is, what are we going to do about all those mounds of dirt on the east side over the garbage fill? The original idea, which was somewhat referenced again by the city engineer, was that, well, we're going to move a lot of it off-site, and we're going to move a lot of it on the western side because you need a lot more fill there to get it out of the flood zone and to deal with sea level rise. And so they got a combination of movement within the site. But then I heard from a consultant during the Planning Commission that that's not what UPC is talking about now. They're talking about developing the west side first, bringing in soil from someplace else, and leaving those... else, and leaving those mounds on the east side so that they can maybe generate, you know, more soil processing and recycling processing revenue for them and maybe even for the city. Well, what that means is that the development on the east side could be stalled. And this is not mentioned at all, I looked in the Planning Commission resolution, they talk about getting the plans ready, talking about, you know, make sure we do remediation, but it doesn't say anything about when all of that happens, particularly, you know, the Title 27 landfill closure. If you don't do that, because there's nothing that requires you to go ahead and do it, and then you go ahead and you develop the west side, and you let the east side stay that way, then don't we need the landfill closure before ecology can actually build there? Don't we need the landfill closure before you can actually have the solar farm built there? I think you need to think about the timing of these processes so that UPC doesn't pull a fast one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Barbara Ebel?
Hi, I'm starting to like PowerPoint a little bit. Barbara Ebel, Brisbane residents. So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about energy resources. So what I have here is some, just some basic numbers. Now, in your staff report, it only talks about what each of the plans generates, but it doesn't talk about net power. So I brought, these figures here are just energy with respect to electricity, like kilowatts in, kilowatts out, right? And that's important, but it's just a starting point, because the way things are going with this net zero being required by the state of California, there's a lot of, a lot of power gets used in the built environment that isn't just electricity. And you can't have a net zero building if you're burning tons and tons of natural gas or, you know. So what I did is I went through, let's see, how do I go? Here we go. Total energy is in consumption is important, because we move away from fossil fuels, we're going to necessarily be moving towards electricity. And the good thing about electricity is these electrons can be generated in a number of ways. I mean, they can be coming from a nuclear power plant today and a solar farm tomorrow. It's interchangeable. So we're going to move, this is the way the building and the sustainability is going. We're moving away from those fossil fuels and towards an electricity-based system. So I wanted to look at not just the electricity used, but the entire energy footprint, because as we move forward, we will be replacing some of those other uses with, we'll be supplying like heat and these other uses with electrical, with electricity. So I don't have data for the Planning Commission's recommendation, that is way beyond my capacity. But the Planning Commission's plan has some similarities to the renewable energy generation thing. So I use that information from the DEIR for my comparison. So because the build-out of the renewable energy generation plan is much smaller than that of the DSP, it's roughly one-tenth the size, you can see the demand in terms of electricity is about one-tenth. I just made up the amortized construction, because for some reason, the DEIR charged construction costs to, construction emissions were assigned to the DSP but not the REGA. And then I also fiddled with the numbers a little bit more here, I'll get to that, with regards to motor vehicle emissions. And I'll explain all of that. Other sources, that's just like sewage and point sources, solid waste. Again, comparing the DSP and the renewable energy generation plan, and you can just see the consumption of the DSP in terms of energy resources just completely outstrips the renewable energy generation plan. But what gets really interesting is when you talk about actual production of energy, the DSPV kit puts out a teeny-weeny little bit of power there, and the renewable energy generation plan puts out a lot more. But when you set that against the consumption side, you can see that the renewable energy generation plan is actually, according to the DEIR, energy positive slightly, and the DSP is a big giant monster of gobble, gobble, gobble. So the numbers behind this, and I actually have my worksheet I'm going to give you on paper. The total unmitigated operational greenhouse gas emissions for the renewable energy generation is negative, and because we are a human-based system, we like to think of things in terms of per capita. We all have a little carbon bubble that we're allowed to carry around with us, and if you make more than that, you're bad. If you make less than that, you're good. So the per capita emissions for the REGA is negative 1.4, which is really good. And of course, the emissions of greenhouse gases for the DSPV is quite high, 7.4 metric tons, and the Bay Area air quality management disposal threshold is 4.6. But if you do any studies online, you read any sustainability, global footprint things, they really want you to be around two metric tons. And then here, I'm going to shut up, because there's just some explanation of where I, a couple places I fiddled with the numbers a little bit, and you'll see that on the worksheet I gave you, worksheet I'm giving you. And also, funny, today I got a, an email from Bayren, which does the training for, like contractors and stuff, to get them up on new building code about pathways to net zero, electrification as a power, as a pathway to net zero. So I was going to give you that information, too, because this is just the way this thing, this stuff is going, is that we're moving towards electricity for all of our power needs, because it can be produced much more cleanly. And that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Dana Dilworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Generally, the problem with the EIR is that when it speaks of protection of species, it only mentions rare and endangered species. Then there is very little observation or studies of the biotics, and then a passing recognition that there might possibly be butterflies present on Ice House Hill, but little other. The biological studies done by Universal Paragon have been done in the wrong season. They did a wetland study in July, and like, you know, it should be done, should have been done in the last two months with all the rain, storm surges and high tides. Migratory studies of birds, and I did hear some recognition of the International Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and studies of aquatic species need to be done year after year, but they've not been done yet. 2006 was when I walked the baylands with Lenny Siegel of the Center for Public Environmental Oversight. The drainage ditch south of the roundhouse was actively flowing petroleum product. It was also the time that James Kasek of Earth Care and Dominic Mansour of Randall Museum and others joined the hike. James discovered the chorus tree frog and stickleback fish, meaning that there could be rare and endangered red-legged frog, similar environment, and the possibility that the stickleback that we saw was an unarmored, but it didn't get confirmed, because it was the time that the aquarium was downtown on Market, or Mission, or Howard, and they weren't able to assist in the observation. Yet, they were using the quote-unquote ditch and spawning, and unfortunately, I beg to differ with the ascertainment that there is no spawning happening. Let me see. They were spawning in the hollows south of the turntable. We watched turkey vultures mate spiraling from above, and if you've ever seen it, it's glorious, because you just wonder if they're going to hit the ground before things have happened. The other biologists noticed an oriole weaver's nest, pointed out a killdeer nest that was filled with eggs, mentioned sighting a savanna wren that was out of its range. What that means is that their habitat has been disrupted, and the baylands provided a refuge. Dominic saw the baylands as a glory hole, a migratory respite. Since our 2006 visit, the water board ordered UPC carry out an interim remediation measure to drain the wetlands. Biologists saw nothing when they were on-site, and as you know, now is the season to observe wildlife. The baylands creates wetlands, the baylands attracts wildlife, or shall I say, she persists. The plan uses a 2010 baseline, years after the damage from the interim measure of gouging the fill and placing a plastic liner on the northern drainage ditch. Leaks still happen, they're underground, they are no longer visible. The EIR misses that the wetlands planned for habitat connection in our open space element and open space plan are being proposed to become wastewater treatment facility. No special comment. I think those are two separate things and need two separate places. The EIR dismisses mentioning all the environmental impacts of the fill operation that has happened since 2010, when it was written, and to the current time. There are also potential sightings of claparail at the south end of the lagoon. A restriction of recreational trails would be an appropriate mitigation, but nothing is found. The EIR misses a lot, but particularly the potential and opportunity for protecting all life, not just a presumed-to-not-be-there rare and endangered species. And I have a few other comments that are a little random, but I am including, for the record, some images. This is the location where the stickleback fish were found. This is an image of the scale of, I mean, of tree frog in relationship to the baylands. And the volume of water the baylands is able, or has been used as wetlands, so that we don't get underrepresented. These are images of the viola pinaculata on Ice House Hill, also, so it's more than just the mission blue that we should be concerned about, and actually, some pictures of the baylands when the fill was the same height as Tunnel Road. So I think these are quite interesting to look at. These are images of the leech eight as they were observed coming off the baylands, and at this point in time, there's only an interim measure on the south of the baylands, which is the north end of the lagoon. Nothing has been done at the channel. This is a picture in there, 1905, of where Kinder Morgan discharges their water, their surface water into the, an area along the channel. And even the people at Kinder Morgan didn't know that they were doing that, so that was quite interesting to me. So I can't imagine our biologists to know. And this is an image of the 1982 baylands floods. I guess I will come back to deal with the other items, but what was suggested to me today is that we observe San Francisco's Maher Amendment, because it gives an idea of how San Francisco is dealing with unregulated fill areas and how the type of, level of things that need to be dealt with. And also, what was suggested at the Planning Commission level is that the city consider and adopt a precautionary principle, which says that if there are disagreements among scientists of potential hazards, that you would err on the side of caution, rather than try to find ways to use manipulations such as health risk assessments by people who don't really know what's going on out there, as being the basis for what we choose to do. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, Dana, can I ask you a question? You referring to a drainage ditch, is that where the bunker sea oil is? Or it's covered, no?
Yeah. You know, it's funny, because Chris pointed out that the bunker sea oil was actually visible in this 82 image, and...
I'm just trying to get a reference to what you're talking about.
The bunker sea is here, this is where...
Oh, okay. The ditch, yeah, okay.
Where it was actively leaking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Ingrid, I noticed that her yellow, like, almost immediately turned.
Yeah, I'm not sure the light's working. It's going from yellow to red.
Red, like, almost instantaneously. So I want to make sure that there's like a one minute.
Thank you for noting that.
Yeah.
Like, in another minute? I could finish it.
It's been red for...
No.
Pardon me?
No, it's been red for a while. We're saying it went from yellow to red.
It just went for the five minutes. It went full green and then just turned red, instead of giving you like a full minute of yellow.
Okay. Well, I do have more to speak to cultural resources and something about the VWR site.
Okay, I'll hold your slip once we're done. Glenn Fieldman?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Prem Law and I have apparently been reading the same article on Mother Jones, so I'm going to pick up maybe where he left off. The article that we were both referring to was published in July of 2015, and the title of it is, "This map shows what San Francisco will look like after sea levels rise." Several times this evening, it's been mentioned that sea level rise projections are in the neighborhood of 55 inches, but this article quotes the San Francisco PUC as saying, as predicting, working with a prediction of eight feet of sea level rise by 2100, which, by the way, is pretty consistent with what I've been reading about scientific research that describes the rate of melting and breakup of ice in the Antarctic. That is going much faster than scientists thought it would, just like everything about climate change is unfolding faster than scientists thought it would. The map that accompanies the article shows the Brisbane baylands, and it shows water overtopping Tunnel Road coming from the lagoon on the south side of the bayland site. It also shows parts of 101 underwater with an eight-foot sea level rise. And this is very concerning. It indicates that infrastructure, a lot of infrastructure is going to have to be moved, and that suggests that a lot of building on the site is probably not a good idea, because there are essential transit corridors that are going to have to be preserved as we go through sea level rise. The second thing about sea level rise that I wanted to mention, even though I'm not a hydrologist, and I don't think any of you are either, is the question of what this rising water is going to do to the stuff in the landfill, and what it might do to a cap over the landfill. Is the pressure of the seawater going to make the land swell up? Could that swelling break the crack, or crack the cap? Could rising seawater, you know, mix in with all the goo that's down there and put it up on the surface? What worries me about this is I don't think anybody knows the answers to those questions. And I think if the council has any thought of building residential housing out there, which I strongly oppose, you really need to find out, to have some real studies done on sea level rise and a hazardous landfill. I did a little bit of research, because I have access to an academic library... I did a little bit of research, because I have access to an academic library, and there hasn't been much written about this. But what has been written about it is a bit alarming. But the peculiarities of every site are different, and so new research would have to be done. I encourage the council to do that before approving any development plan involving housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Greg Anderson?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, not feeling very well tonight, so I brought some notes. I'd like to start off by reading from the resignation letter of Mustafa Santioga Ali, who recently resigned his position of 24 years at the EPA. Mr. Ali said, "Over the past 24 years, having worked with more than 500 communities, I have learned a few things that I want to share with you. The first is that communities speak for themselves. When we listen and then work collaboratively with our stakeholders, some very productive actions can happen that have real positive change in local communities. Secondly, the need to recognize and support the incredible wealth of knowledge and innovative ideas that exists in the communities that we serve. A number of our most successful programs and grants evolve out of the recommendations from frontline communities." The point I want to make from this quote is that the BB-CAG is an essential part of the EPA process. If we're charging forward here, just on the assumption that we can't prove today that there won't be a problem in the future, we're going about it backwards. We need to see plans in advance that give us assurances, and we need to let the communities speak for themselves. What I mean by that is, the plan that is approved by the city council should be a plan that is acceptable to members who have spent years in the BB-CAG studying the real issues. That should be your primary litmus test. I know there's a large desire to build housing to address the housing crisis. I'll talk about the budgetary issues of that later, because some of the claims that have been made here, I don't think would actually result in less expensive housing on the baylands, especially when you have a very expensive development that requires a lot of remediation like we have here. The thing I want to focus on, though, is the high liquefaction potential and settling can be disastrously expensive. We've talked about monitoring and mitigation measures. It's been said that we will monitor the air filtration systems coming out of the buildings, but we can't monitor what's inside the buildings after construction is finished, because just things in the building can interfere with the readings. But it really isn't clear what those measurements indicate in terms of actions. What happens if your readings fall? We expect the readings to fall over time as levels fall, but how low is dangerous? When do you know that it's not working? And what if they actually rise? We've heard that things might shift around. What do you do in those situations? I think we need more details on that. The other issue is, it's been said that we will be monitoring for breaks in the barrier. And how are we going to know? Well, you know, we could look for cracks in the pavement, but does that mean that every crack that we find is going to be something that needs to be remediated immediately as a danger? This could be really expensive and difficult to monitor. I think we need more clarity on how that process is going to work. And furthermore, even if your buildings themselves stay completely level, we also have noticed, you know, the high amount of settling that we have out on Tunnel Road today. And the claim is that after soil compaction, that leveling will be less. But the question is, how much less? And if you have differentials happening between the streets and the properties, and the yards aren't looking right, and the roads aren't looking right, I mean, that's going to be very expensive. So if you're doing this for housing, hoping that you're going to save people money, you might be setting people up for a really hard fall if they accept all of these liabilities, and then decades down the road, it's up to the individual homeowners or even the HOAs to remediate all of this. So I think we need to have a little more clarity on that before making any plans or decisions to go beyond what the planning commission recommended. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clara Johnson?
We have a lot of caring and curious people and smart people that are talking here tonight. I bet you appreciate them, too. My comments are on the staff report for this hearing, and I'd like to start on page two. "The Renewable Energy Alternative Is The Environmentally Superior Alternative. It Is The Only Alternative That Improves The Lives Of The People Living In Brisbane, Visitation Valley, And Bayshore Daily City." I'd like to suggest two changes in the mitigation measure 4.P.1. "In addition to minimizing idling time to five minutes, why not require that all equipment that is available in an electric-powered version should be, the electrically-powered version, like SFO to reduce air pollution?" A change in mitigation measure 4P1. "Automatic shut-off of office equipment light should be required, instead of just shut-off." Page three, "There should be at least 100 acres of ground-mounted renewable energy in the form of high-efficiency solar panels, which could start operating sooner than building-integrated or roof-mounted photovoltaics. It would also be wise to construct a 257.4 acres of building-mounted solar panels. Wind turbines should be included within the development, despite some changes in prevailing winds." On page four, "Parkland And Other Open Space Should Be Maximized. It Has A Positive Impact On Human Stress And Health, On Wild Animal Survival, And It Is A More Practical Use Of This Former Wetland/Mud-Flat/Bay-Bottom Land." The 1994 general plan required at least 25% open space. On page six, "The Wind Behaves Differently Over Water Than It Is Over Land, And Your Report Uses The Phrase 'Near-Ground Level.' Doesn't The Presence Of So Much Water In The Area Being Studied Make The Useless Of The Model In Question?" On page seven, "According To The General Plan Of 1994, The Project Buildings Were Not Supposed To Create A Wall Of Structures Along The Bayside Of The Baylands. The Wall Of Solid Mass Seems Likely To Adversely Impact Windsurfing Resources." Here is a general comment on biological resources. "It Seems To Me That During This Application Process, The Biological Resources Have Been Consistently Undervalued. I Think The Purpose Is To Avoid Mitigation Measures To Protect Them. I Don't Dispute That There Has Been An Assault On Anything Alive In That Area, But Life Is Resilient And There Is Value In Small Creatures And Plants That Are Not Taken Into Account. The Insects, Birds, And Wetland Creatures And The Plants All Have Their Value Even In A Disturbed Ecosystem. I Dispute The Idea That Outside The Shooting Rage, The Habit Is Degraded On Ice House Hill. It Depends On Whose Habitat You're Referring To. The Horses Who Have Disturbed The Slopes But Disturbed Slopes Are Where Lupine Plants Grow, And It Is The Primary Food For The Mission Blue Butterfly. Ice House Hill Should Be Treated As A Habitat For An Endangered Species. The Shooting Range Needs Rehab And It Should No Longer Be Used As A Shooting Range, Which It Still Is." I, you can hear it, especially on weekends. "The Water Flowing From The Levinson Marsh Under Bayshore Boulevard And Through The Baylands Is Largely Ignored. There Should Be A Better Understanding Of Any Contaminants It Carries And Where It Flows In Order To Understand How It Impacts The Land That May Already Be Contaminated." Page 10, "I Appreciate That Mitigation Measures 4CV And 4A And 4C/4B Set Performance Standards To Protect On-Site Resources, But It's Not Enough. There Is, uh-oh, A Disconnect Between The Fact That There Are Large Areas Of Land And Water, Areas That Contain Contaminants Of Concern And Metals Of Concern That Are In Small Amounts And Are Considered To Be Less Than Should Be Remediated, But They're Still There. They're Still Interacting, Which Is Not Really Studied By Our Current Laws. All These Activities Need To Be Taken Into Account And How Those Hazards May Impact Any Changes That Anyone Intends To Make. We Ignore Them At Our Peril, And I Think It Needs More Study." Page 11, "The Presentation And Implementation Of A Rehab Plan For The Railroad Roundhouse Should Be A Requirement Tied To A Point In The Progress Of The Project. For Example, Before Any Building Is Occupied On The Side." Page 12, "There Is Old Bay Mud And There Is New Bay Mud, Young Bay Mud Underlying The Baylands." I Appreciate The Concern That's Shown In The Report, But I Think Maybe You Need More Thorough Investigations Regarding Seismic Events And The Corrosive Soils And The Full Implications Of Those Soils. We've Gone Red." One of the things, even though we're only on page 13 of 19, at the very end, dated January 24, 2017, Inside Climate News, NOAA's latest report arrives predicting a worst-case scenario of eight feet of sea level rise by 2100. And I have provided you with a copy of my notes, so that you'll have them. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just about to ask for those. Deb Horn?
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you once again. I have a sense that we're drinking an ocean from a straw, and so, so much information, so much information tonight, and just in general, and I just want to thank you for your service, because it's so much work, wrapping your arms around all this. So, speaking of water, I wanted permission to talk about water, because I felt like the last meeting, it was a little confusing in the end, so I did a little more research. So can I have permission to have some comments from the last meeting that...
Well, we...
I'm okay with it.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. So for those of you who weren't here at the last meeting, there was some confusion, because we had an attorney come from the Modesto Irrigation District, and she gave some public testimony to support their DEI, our letter, that clearly stated that the Modesto Irrigation District did not agree to the water transfer required to meet the square acres needed by the specific plan. So it created some confusion, and our city attorney advised us that since we were not deciding on the specific plan, that this level and detail of analysis didn't need to be in the FEIR. I still, I felt unsettled from that, so I did quite a bit of research this week. And I did find in SEQA guidelines that if housing exceeds 500 units, SEQA guidelines require that water resources be specifically identified and agreed to by agencies that will be involved with the required water supplies for the specific plan. And you can go online, I actually sent an email out to, I believe, most of you about this, with some information. I'll leave you some more tonight. You can read about the guidelines and the process, but what I did, I sought some legal counsel as well, and I have a case here that I'm going to submit to you, too, that was a similar case, where it was, again, FEIR that didn't specify all the water that was needed for the plan that was really the end goal of the developer. And I just wanted to read a couple things, even though it's legalese from that ruling, and I will give you copies of this, so you can, you know, have more time to read it yourself. But basically, it says that, "Under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, the future water supplies identified and analyzed in an environmental impact EIR report must bear a likelihood of actually providing available, of being available, and that speculative sources and unrealistic allocations and paper water are insufficient basis for decision-making under SEQA." So this case was decided by the California Supreme Court, and the FEIR was found to be inadequate. And because it was not specific, and there's, in this document, there's lots of other case law that cited, from Stanislaus case, Santa Clarita case, and basically, they're saying, SEQA, in the Stanislaus case, SEQA, the court recognized permits the environmental analysis for long-term, multi-part projects to be tiered, so that the broad overall impacts analyzed in an EAR at the first tier programmatic level need not be reassessed as each of the projects subsequent, narrower phases is approved. "Tearing Is Not A Device For Deterring The Identification Of Significant Environmental Impacts That The Adoption Of A Specific Plan Can Be Expected To Cause." So what does that mean? That just basically means that, even though we're doing this, we're tiering as we're moving forward, we're looking at different plans, if the end goal is the specific plan, the FEIR is required to provide a plan, an analysis, to provide the water for that plan. And I will submit this to you. So ultimately, I guess, finally, I guess my conclusion is that future water sources for a large land-use project and impacts of exploiting those sources are not the type of information that can be deferred for future analysis. There's a lot of case law here that backs this up. So I think as far as water requirements go, this FEIR proves to be inadequate.
Thank you, Deb. And if you could have provided that information, I'd appreciate it.
Can you give it to the city clerk?
Yes.
Deb, may I?
Okay. Jonathan Sharfman?
Jonathan Sharfman, Universal Paragon. Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, on geology and seismicity, we seem to have had the same conclusion during the planning commission hearings about whether or not housing is proposed by our company on the former sanitary landfill, as referenced clearly by a couple of speakers tonight, and repeatedly, not just in public comment during planning commission, but in planning commission deliberations. So please, for the record, understand that no housing has been proposed on the former sanitary landfill. None. The geologic and seismic conditions and mitigations required for development of housing on the area that we propose are different than the mitigations and the geologic mitigations that are necessary to build commercial development on the former landfill, which we have proposed. And we propose them under the same regulatory requirements that the city of Brisbane has allowed, or has approved, millions of square feet of development out at Sierra Point. So please, I know these are emotionally charged issues, but let's be very, very clear. Hundreds of people sleep every night on former landfill in Sierra Point at the hotels. Thousands either work or are planned to work in the new office parks that are, and R&amp;D parks that are planned for build-out at Sierra Point, under the same conditions, the same mitigations, the same closure requirements that the state of California and the county have set for Sierra Point. Those would be the same requirements out at the Brisbane Baylands. We understand and respect, these are emotionally charged issues, but please don't confuse the facts. Secondly, just as a reference with regard to biological resources, Biohabitats is nationally-renowned ecological restoration firm. They've successfully restored landscapes all around the country, including bringing dead rivers back to life in places like Pittsburgh, upstate New York, and in the Northeast. We have been working with them and the BCDC to... We, we have been working with them and the BCDC to look at a pilot program, to assist the BCDC in having a pilot program to help with their fringe wetland enhancement project, to help with wetland buffer zones with a pilot out on the edge of the lagoon that we hope can help the BCDC in their broader efforts and also be kind of an indicator for future design of wetlands and habitat enhancement at the lagoon and at the Brisbane Baylands. And while, while we were declined several times by Open Space and Ecology Committee to have Biohabitats make that presentation of the progress of their work, we did, we did at our Project Information Center have a great presentation at which we would be happy to have them come back, present either at a joint meeting of Planning Commission and, and the committee, or to City Council. We would urge the council and the public to separate some of the disagreement with elements of our proposal for the economic reuse of the baylands with some of the experts that really are the top in their field and we have brought to bear on some of the problems that exist here. Lastly, there, I am going to submit a letter just to clarify once again our company's purpose in, in having a new survey to bring some more information to bear on, on decision-making for the baylands. It's two years since the city sponsored the FM3 survey, about four years, or five years since we last had a survey that we sponsored. So, I'll just be submitting a letter clarifying some of that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Schuman?
Good evening, Council. I just came here from Berkeley. I'm a windsurfer and I wanted to speak out in favor of, you know, support of preserving the unique wind source, resource that we have at Candlestick Point. People come from all over the world to sail Candlestick Point. It's one of the, the Bay Area, of course, is world famous for windsurfing. And Candlestick is, is world famous for, for, for a certain type of, several different varieties of windsurfing. One of them is, is, is one of the few places that beginners can actually sail out there. It's one of the safest places to sail because it's close to shore. The water is very flat, so it's good for beginners. They, you know, they're not, you know, you know, getting thrown off their boards by big waves, which is sort of what happens when you go out into the middle of the bay and some of these other sites. And it's also one of the great freestyling spots. We have people come from all over the world to, to sail this very good flat water here that allows them to throw some really interesting tricks, which they can go out and compete out, you know, they go around the world to compete in these freestyling. And we have a sort of a nice group of freestylers that are, they really need this resource. So, so I really want you to sort of put a high priority on keeping, keeping that wind corridor clear of high buildings and, and wind turbines, you know, they, they have their place, but I think this is a really unique resource that, that's part of the bay, which makes the Bay Area so special, is that we have all these interesting, unique resources. And Candlestick is one of them. And I want you to really sort of, you know, have a great degree of skepticism about, you know, some of these building plans, you know? I think the ideas of keeping tall buildings away from the waterfront and up toward the hills, probably on some more solid ground, and, and, and having a progressive height is, you know, as you get closer to the water, buildings have to be lower. I think that's a really good idea. I think wind turbines, I, you know, I just, you know, it's just, they're stealing the wind, basically. So, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to believe that wind turbines in this corridor would not have an adverse effect on, on windsurfing. I heard the gentleman speak earlier about, in defense of, what I guess was a wind tunnel study that was done for the EIR. I'm not very familiar with the EIR. I just, just, just got wind of it, so to speak, the other day. But I did look at it and I saw that there was a, and I'm an engineer with 30 years of experience at Lawrence Berkeley Lab. So, I know a little bit about mechanical engineering and I know a little bit about fluid dynamics, computational fluid dynamics, which is computer modeling. And, you know, wind tunnels are 20th century technology and for studying wind effects. And I saw that this study was a 1 to 600 ratio, or, you know, scale length ratio, which sounds quite high to me, actually. If you go look at the, the big wind tunnels down there at Moffett Field, they're huge, okay? And the reason they're huge is because you need to be full, you need, the better, the closer you are to full scale, the more you capture things like turbulence, onsets, and, you know, there's just a number of Rayleigh, Taylor instabilities. I could, you know, bore you with a whole bunch of stuff like that. But a lot of the turbulence is, is hard to model in a very small model. And so, that's where computer modeling is now the, the gold standard. So, I don't think, I think that whatever plan you come up with, I think it really would be beneficial. We learn a lot more by, by mandating computer modeling of, of wind flows here. There's many, many different things can be studied here. You'll get a lot more information out of a computer model than you would out of a wind tunnel. But that's about all I want to talk about here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Ames?
Danny Ames, Brisbane resident. Thank you, Commissioner members, Madam Mayor, for your ear, your time. A broad amount of stuff's been covered. I mean, I don't know what I can really add to this discussion, other than I support the Planning Commission's findings. I do like the idea of a solar farm. If you were to Google clean power San Francisco, there's been an explosive growth. They cannot meet the demand for renewable energy for San Franciscans. They're scrambling to find more renewable energy resources. The added benefits to that is you don't need to fire up the Peker Power Plant in Potrero Hill when the load gets too high because the corridor, is it saturation, the power lines that you see that come across San Bruno into that substation over there by Geneva, gets overloaded. They can't, they can't bring in more energy. So, they fire up a Peker Power Plant over in Potrero Hill to satisfy the load. If we had a solar farm, you relieve the need for a Peker Power Plant. You take the load off the lines coming up the corridor. You satisfy the, the needs. There's a huge consumer demand for, again, if you Google up clean power San Francisco, you can read all about it. You can see that they're just, they're just explosive. I do want to ask, what is the depth to the bedrock out there in the baylands? And what is the volumetric estimate of the toxic dump out there? And correct me if I'm wrong, but this has been decades of unregulated, undocumented dumping from the airport in San Francisco? Is this correct? Do you know that?
I mean, the dirt?
Yeah.
I think there's probably-
Is it pretty undocumented, the amount of toxins out there?
If you ask questions, then we can ask staff after the search.
Right, right. And I'd also like to know the depth to the bedrock and how, you know, is it shallow? Is it really deep? I'd like to know what that is, if possible. And I think that's, that's it. I don't have much more to add. Again, thank you for your time.
Joel Diaz?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable City Councilmembers. I'm Joel Diaz. Just wanted to talk about potential deficiencies in some of the analysis and things that were discussed tonight. Just pulling up my notes. Wanted to, I talked to Dr. Lee at one point, and he was talking about the need for more extensive and very thorough, ongoing monitoring and testing of the lagoon and checking the aquatic life for biomarkers. And what he was saying to me, essentially, and I'm trying to paraphrase, was that there is no way to know if there's an increase in the release of toxins from the dump site into the lagoon unless we start tracking this stuff. And we could be causing irreparable damage to the species of, of life that exist in the lagoon and potentially humans as well by exposing them to large doses of toxins that we're unaware of if we're not accurately monitoring and testing the lagoon. So, at some point, I think, no matter what happens, that really, that needs to take place. There needs to be containment of the toxins and we need to verify it. And we certainly don't want to be responsible for a very big toxic soup in the lagoon. That should be the responsibility of the, the owner of the baylands. So, I think that, that should really be looked at. With regard to the, the windsurfer issue, the, you know, the wind tunnel, it's kind of a misnomer. It's not really, in my mind, testing the wind. I was here when the, when the engineer talked about it. It's really analyzing air that's flowing over solid objects. It's not talk, it's not talking about how wind forms. It's not onshore flow. It's not, wind is, is created from the onshore flow. And there are competing winds as well in that area. And if you look at like a, a wind map, you'll see that it's not just coming from one direction. And when that flow is interrupted, there's really no guarantee that the flow's going to start up again. And that's the concern. And you have these other competing winds, and this has not been studied. This, this can't be understood by just looking at a wind tunnel model with consistent flow of air over a solid object. And this is something that happened at Oyster Point, and it actually creates what they call a shadow effect. And the same thing, it was supposed to not impact the wind, yet it did. And it's sort of an unexplainable phenomenon. And it's not addressed by this specific wind tunnel test. It's just a one-dimensional test. There needs to be much other broad-reaching tests to understand the effects of interrupting the wind flow and how winds react and how they're created. And because this is a world-class windsurfing spot, world-class in the world, this is like one of the top spots, we, we probably should elevate the standard of care and do more than just a simple crude wind tunnel test to preserve this precious resource. So, I think that is kind of a deficiency in that analysis. Talking about the 2010 baseline. So, I understand that that is allowed under SEQA because it has to do with a notice of preparation, and when that was filed, that we can establish the baseline based on that, 2010. And that's allowed under SEQA legislation. But scientifically, it might not be smart. At some point, that data becomes too old. It's outdated. Is seven years too old? Maybe, maybe not. But at some point, we might have to take a look and say, this is, this is too old. With regard to some comments made about the solar study that was done, I, I read that solar study, and I do believe they actually did have a set aside amount for remediation for the solar farm. And it was significant. It was a lot of money. It's not, you don't need as extensive as remediation for the development as you do for a solar farm, but there was a substantial amount of money set aside in the solar report that I saw. And I think that we don't need ownership. What the city, if the city was to own a utility-scale solar farm, we would just need an easement over the east side property, for example. And I think it would be fair for the owner of that property, in exchange for their soil business that's impacting the environment as a form of mitigation, for example, to offer an easement to the city to run a solar farm in the interim, a utility-scale solar farm. Because there is impact from their business. And I'm not sure how we could mitigate that, but maybe a solar farm would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more slips. I do have a few people who spoke already, who they're asked if they could speak again. Before I allow that, I wanted to ask if there's anyone who hasn't yet spoken who would like to speak. Paul?
Paul Biscal, Brisbane resident. Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor. So, I've spoken in the past. I was on the committee for the draft environmental impact report. And, you know, there were some things that I brought up a long time ago when we were talking about the baylands. And one of the things that I thought was important was floating structures. And I went as far as to speak with Will Travis at the time from the BCDC. And basically, he said that he would give his stamp of approval if there was a project that could create more wetlands on the bay, which could include floating structures. And the reason why I'm bringing up floating structures again tonight is because critical infrastructure, including sewage tanks, could be incorporated into the baylands as floating structures. And Brisbane doesn't have the money for infrastructure out in the baylands, nor does UPC, is why housing is a big part of the baylands. I had said, on the railroad side where they're proposing to put housing, if the site was cleaned up, and not remediated, but cleaned up, possibly by building a conveyor belt and sending all that contaminant over to the unregulated landfill side of the baylands. And Councilmember Lentz asked the consultant at the time if that was possible, and she said, "Well, it could be. I've never, it's never been done, but it's possible. Regulations would have to be changed." You know, we have to get creative. And sea level rise is not going away. Stormwater coming off the mountain, Visitation Valley and that area, isn't going away. It's always going to have to be there. You know, the salt ponds in the South Bay have been restored, which were industrial uses, just like the rail yard. Hundreds of millions of dollars came in. It's the largest project on the West Coast, is restoring the wetlands on the bay. So, I thought a portion of the baylands could be cleaned up. Instead of trucking, like Mr. Zoloff mentioned, the contaminants would have to be taken through neighborhoods to take to a landfill somewhere. Well, why don't we put it in our own landfill? You know, when the developer makes comments like, "People are living out at Sierra Point", that's transient living, okay? Sierra Point was a regulated landfill. Our landfill out here is unregulated. Military waste, medical waste, everything and anything, okay? There's no guarantees out there as to what's on the baylands. So, seismically, sea level rise is an issue, liquefaction and earthquakes. If you have something floating, all three of those wouldn't have no impact on a floating structure. We'd never have a tsunami on the bay big enough in this section of the bay to have a effect like that. So, I know it wasn't looked at in the EIR, unfortunately, but I think it's possible. And if money could come in to restore wetlands, like Will Travis at the time said that we need more wetlands in the bay, we don't need more bay, open bay water, you know, we can restore areas that were once wetlands and get it cleaned up, not remediate it. You know, we're talking about a small area in the railroad area to remediate compared to the overall 700 acres of the baylands. One other thing I'd like to mention, it was said that there won't be any impacts on HCP lands because it's on the other side of bay shore. Well, there's been no mention as to where a water tank for the baylands is going to be positioned. And if it's not on Ice House Hill, because I've, it's been said that there's not enough elevation, then is it on the Levison property? Is it up on the Northeast Ridge? I mean, is it in the Brisbane Acres? Where's it, where's the water tank going to go? So, you know, a lot of what the Planning Commission worked on, I would recommend, the renewable energy plan is like, one of the best things that's ever happened to this whole region, if that could come to fruition. Because we would no longer be at the end of the transmission line, we could be at the beginning and sell our power out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak who has not yet spoken? Okay. So, I'll return to the people who requested to speak on other topics. Prem Lau? Prem Lau?
Good evening, once again, mayor and council members. So I had brought up two articles. The other one is on sea level rise. Glenn mentioned it also, and the topic was covered to a similar extent at the beginning of the presentation this evening. So, but I wanted to give a visual aspect to those who will be watching the video later on. So this is the article to which Jen, to which Glenn referred, and it, in the title, it refers to San Francisco, but in fact, the article concerns Brisbane as well. And so I just wanted to touch on a few points concerning the article that I've highlighted here, in that developers have been busy planning housing, and these construction projects often sit on land susceptible to rising waters due to climate change, but regulators and local governments are not doing much to prepare. And so, "The public press found 27 major commercial and residential developments that will be vulnerable to flooding if San Francisco sea levels rise as much as climate researchers like the National Research Council project in the next century." And this article includes several maps that are digital and therefore can be zoomed into. And one of those I have zoomed into, and I'll come back to that in just a second. But also in the article, "To make its maps, the public press partnered with the University of California Berkeley Cartography and Geographic Information System Education Lab and used flooding and sea level projections from the U.S. Geological Survey and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission." The San Francisco Public Utilities Commission predicts that in the next 100 years, water levels in the bay could rise as much as eight feet over high tide at current levels, including storm surge. So just one or two more points here. So very little is being done to prepare for potential waterfront flooding risk. And regarding the cities and counties of the Bay Area, none have actually enacted climate adaptation plans like updating flood plan ordinances and building codes, and such shortsightedness can lead to staggering costs. So the map that I had mentioned just a moment ago shows the, let's take a look at it, hold on just a second. There we go. So can you scroll, I think that's upside down. Okay. So scroll down a little bit, or maybe scroll up, actually, I think is better. So this is saying the potential sea level rise is 8.3 feet. And if you scroll up a little bit, you can see that it predicts, due to sea level rise, that you'll have all of that sector, most of that sector of 101 essentially underwater. And a lot of that will reach into the Baylands. And what this map doesn't show is the area by the rail yard that will also be affected. So I also wanted to respond briefly to the point that construction will not be exactly on the dump. And although it may not be exactly on the dump, it is still going to be on landfill. And I'd like to draw a bit of a comparison to a structure that I knew of in Davis, known as the Hog Barn. And the Hog Barn was exactly what it sounds like. It was a structure filled with hogs. And when the wind blew a certain direction, you could smell that Hog Barn for miles in Davis. And so gases, they don't care about boundaries. They'll flow to whomever wants, whoever is there, even if the house is not, if housing is not exactly on the dump, the gases will flow, whether it's 100 feet or however many feet it is, and those people living right next to the dump will be affected. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to pause for a moment because I do know it's almost 10:30. I want to give Madison a chance to ask any further follow-up questions.
Oh, well, that's nice of you. I don't, I don't have any more. I was just going to wait because I know that there was one more speaker, so I was gonna just wait until that was done.
There's two, well, Dana and Barbara both said.
Okay, I'll wait till they're done.
Okay. Great. Okay, so Dana Delwerd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Regarding cultural resources, there have been some Native American resources found on the Schlag property. And when they're found, they go through a normal routine of contacting the state Native American Resources. I'm not sure exactly what the council is. But I happened to hear a woman, an Ojulani woman, who talked about the experience of Emeryville and the Shell Mound there. And she was very distressed that all that was done was to provide a parking lot and a sign, and that there's so much more to the culture that could have been, that could have come from the knowledge of this being a sacred site. And I would hope that we have regulations that are better than, you know, basically it all being quietly done outside of the purview of the public. I also have heard that there was a rave at the Roundhouse fairly recently, and I'm really concerned about, and I've expressed this before, I know Clark has heard me say this, I'm concerned about the things that people think that they can currently do at the Baylands, including the little hot rod place that's down near the, near actually where the channel cuts to the bay, near Ice House Hill, near the horse farm. Yeah, where they're doing dirt bikes. They are kicking up soils that have not been mitigated. I have brought it up over and over again. We look the other way. These are very things that we should be conscious of, and yet it continues to happen. The other thing is, is that there's new information on the VWR site that could have an impact in understanding some of the hydrology at the southernmost end. And I'm going to go back to complaining about UPC telling lies. I recently went on the Baylands tour, and I heard them talking about how the landfill is sanitary fill. And here we have, "Oh, but people like Sierra Point. Sierra Point is a different type of landfill. It was regulated. It's still a danger to the public. Housing is not allowed on it. I know other communities are considering it, and guess what? They dig into the ground and they find contamination. What do we do now? Let's not get into these situations. Let's not let the developers lie to us about the situations, about the environmental situations that exist below." And so I'm really livid because Jonathan Scharfman just stood here and said, "Let's not confuse the facts." And yet, that's exactly what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Hi, I just wanted to talk about a couple of other little things. So when I first moved here, I just missed the 89, and I went to work at Mendel's on Haight Street, which is not on Phil. But the girls I worked with told me stories of working there in the 89. And the store is kind of long, it's sort of got small frontage, and it goes back quite a ways. And there's a raised platform in the back where the fabric's kept. And the girls would talk about standing there and watching waves moving through the concrete floor of the store. And you think, you think something's solid until the earth underneath it starts to move, and it's not. And that just made a huge impression to me, like, what waves moving through concrete like it's water? I had a demonstration I was going to do for you tonight on liquefaction. I'm hoping you guys will indulge me on another night. I simply was not able to have that together. The windsurfing, I remember talking about that with the planning commission. I remember one of the reasons we were upset was because when they decided to scale, do these scale models for the building, they made them, the blocks were just like, each city block or each block of development was just a uniform block. They didn't model the each and every different building. Well, maybe that because they didn't have that information, well, fine. But there was some discussion about how the additional articulations in the shapes of the buildings and having multiple buildings instead of just one uniform cube would cause additional turbulence. So, and then also, I thought that their threshold of surfable, windsurfable days made a lot more sense to me than what was done by the consultant. Because, I mean, if you get 20% less days, that's a big deal. I mean, how would you like to have your pay cut 20% or your house floor rent reduced 20%, you know? It doesn't sound like very much until it's something that's being taken away from you. And so I had a lot of empathy with the windsurfers and their position, even though I don't windsurf, and I've never go to windsurf because the big bodies of water terrify me. But, you know, still, it's important. It's world-class. It's worth preserving. Natural biological resources, even if it's not disturbed habitat, I just wanted, other people have said this, it still has value. I mean, we're going to, we're going to go in and end up hitting it just as things are coming back, you know? And that the environment is reasserting itself, so, you know, that's ironic, if not inhumane. Those piers in that soil, you know, we've heard a lot about the plant thriving, but you're putting piers into a dump, and there's all kinds of funny pHs, which does all kinds of funny things to steel reinforce concrete? So that's not, you know, how far, how far do you want to trust that? You know? Even if you can get the piers down to bedrock, which I have serious doubts about, because it's 200 feet in some places, and maybe it's not that far in other places, but, you know, 50 years, are the piers all going to be eaten away by an alkaline or acidic environment? You know? And then are they going to be weakened? And then are they going to shear in an earthquake? It's just not, not a good thing. And the final thing I wanted to come back, circle around back to is the Roundhouse. I am so offended by the care UPC has taken of that place. So offended. Natural cultural trust. And they had some flimsy-ass chain-link fence around it that allowed somebody to go in there and have a campfire and burn two-thirds of it down, and they continue to let it degrade. And the one thing I can say is, you know, that soils processing permit is up for reapproval. And if you guys don't tie some Roundhouse protection stabilization to that soils improvement processing permit renewal, you're fools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clara, Clara had her hand.
Oh, yes, thank you. Clara Johnson?
Oh, I think she hadn't spoken yet.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Come on up.
On page 13, "When will the soil sampling and analysis plan dated 2011 be implemented to test all the soils deposited on the land prior to February 2010? How will you test every 1,000 cubic yards of soil and be able to keep track of what's tested, what isn't, and how it will affect the air quality, stormwater remediation, and seismic safety? The final design-level geotechnical investigation should be reviewed by a seismic engineering firm, and that firm should make recommendations to the city engineer prior to the city engineer's review of the final design-level geotechnical investigations. Otherwise, you're sending it straight to the engineer. And I don't think it's fair, when this is such a complex issue, to give it to, unless the department has a seismic structural engineer on staff. That action would ensure a high level of expertise." On page 14, "Title 27, land closure requires a landfill cap maintenance. There should be verification that the maintenance takes place within 90 days of when it was required." In other words, verify. "The required changes in emergency response plans when changes in land use or structures take place should also be reported to the city or its agent." It's a reference to mitigation 4.0-2B. Page 15, "I appreciate the concern shown for these issues, but there's more information that needs to be obtained about the eight-foot sea level rise. The soil and soil piles, huge piles, represent a risk of failure that needs more investigation." You're looking at a face, like a cliff, of fill. And in recent times, there have been slides of garbage, newspaper in the last year, piles of garbage or coal tailings that have caused catastrophes in different countries. I think there's an indication that we really need to carefully examine this. And if you think about it, if you're going to have 20 feet by Bay Shore Boulevard, 20 feet high with what's planned to put the, to the train down in a hole, then that is, what's that going to create in terms of possible flooding on Bay Shore Boulevard? How's that going to be contained? It's like, it doesn't seem like some of these things have been thought through as to all of the possible impacts, not just what they want to pay attention to. Page 16, "The runoff in this project requires more testing than in most industrial sites. Our current stormwater plan has been criticized for not meeting EPA standards. We need to place greater scrutiny on runoff and groundwater on the Baylands." The only groundwater being remediated, this is mentioned in the report, is in OU1 and in Slaves. There's no groundwater remediation going on in OU2. And there's also, well, I don't know if it makes any sense, in the landfill, but it isn't there either. And there's an implication in this report that it's going on everywhere. Page 17, "There should be site-specific controls for each project, and the overall infrastructure needs to take all the variables of the site into account." And the, page 18, "Mitigation measures should be limited to the use of pesticides," this is the integrated pest management plan, "and other chemicals that are not suspected of harming beneficial insects." I would prefer that only natural forms of pesticides be used. I think the planning commission made many, many valuable recommendations. And I wanted to tell you about air quality, that the, a website, areavibes.com, rates cities nationwide. Brisbane's air quality is 13% above the average American city, and Brisbane's air pollution is 61% worse. Now, in the valley in West Sacramento, that's 200% worse. But if you allow this to be built, along with all the other things being built in San Francisco, maybe we can get closer to 200% worse. I think it's underestimated how bad the air quality is, as well as how bad the traffic will be. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmember Davis is going to have to go. She's got to be at the airport in about 17 minutes.
Oh, no. I, 17 minutes.
So is there anything you would like to say?
That is true. I do actually have to be there in 17 minutes.
Well, you're excused unless you have anything you'd like to add.
No, I was just, I know Beth is the last one, so, right? Are you going to be?
I think Beth, okay.
Because I don't, I'm.
You want to be here?
I'm going to have to go and go through the whole video all over to find you, so it's easier to just stick it out.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Beth Grossman. I just appreciate the, this enormity of the task before us. Last night, I attended a meeting at the Bayview Opera House, was a community meeting of, it was, we heard a presentation by the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the OEHHA. And they have a new website that they gave a presentation about called Cal EnviroScreen 3.0. And I highly recommend you check this out because Brisbane and the Bayview Hunters Point are the top 5% in California of the most impact by pollution and toxicity. So, and there's a whole map, and you can see, like, see where we stand. And it's quite frightening when I think that I've raised my child here and I've been living here for 20 years. So I can pass on the website to you, and it explains how they came to all this data and everything. So anyways, I just want to say that I really feel like we cannot... So anyways, I just want to say that I, I really feel like we cannot consciously allow housing to be on this land. I mean, I'm really worried about even Brisbane, where we all live, and what we've been exposed to all this, all these years. Um, and then furthermore, I also, it may have been brought up before, but I just want to underline, I'm very worried about the Kimberly Morgan tank farm and what kind of, um, in case of an earthquake, in case of a leakage, in case of, who knows what could happen there. I feel like we're all at great risk if we don't have some kind of, um, plans for what could happen in case of an emergency with that, and especially if there's houses out there. And I, I really feel like we're just kind of a tinderbox right here, especially during the summer months. So, um, I hope that, I hope that's being taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
And, um, I'll send this link to all of you.
Thank you.
You know, Beth, send it to the city clerk, that way she can distribute it to.
Yeah.
Everybody, be better.
All right. Safe house.
You know.
Have a good vacation. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Annie Miller?
I'm, I'm sorry to bother you, but there is one thing that is sort of bothering me, and it, it has to do with words and definitions, and we've got quite a few of those over this process, and I don't want to go into all of them, but the landfill, what is a landfill? Well, we should be talking about bay fill. All of this was bay, and it was filled for the rail yard, that was filled, and that has to be capped somehow, and whatever is done. And then the landfill, which is really just a dump fill, but both of them are fill, so you, you don't say that the rail yard is not landfill, it is bay fill, and so is both, so, remember, you have fill, and that's what you're dealing with, both sides.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Deb Horn? Oh, I think Deb put her hand up first. You're next.
This is just a quick question regarding the bayland soil processing. I know that in the study part, you talked a little bit about the soils that are, um, have been dumped on top of the bay fill and the landfill and the dump fill. And, um, so my, my request, I mean, I've gone through and I've read the whole guidelines for submitting soils, and I'm just wondering how much we're monitoring that. So my request would be to ask for the manifest, since we've been testing it, um, since 2009, of where has this soil come from? Who are the contractors? Um, what is the source of the soil? And, and, and I guess, you know, there is a concern because of Tetra Tech dumping all of their soil all over the Bay Area, and apparently the whistleblowers making claims that it was dumped on our land. Um, so it would be really great to get the manifest and have a record of, um, where did that soil come from, and, and really take a look at that soil as potential toxic soil as well, um, just to make sure that we cover our bases, because that would be pretty serious. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Deb. Paul?
I just wanted to add, Paul Buscaglia, Brisbane resident, I wanted to add to my comment, when UPC and Jonathan had mentioned that they wanted to do a pilot program in the lagoon to do some restoration efforts along the, uh, I believe the south end of the baylands up against the lagoon. 30 years ago, we had a serious, uh, main failure from the Kinder Morgan pipeline that comes under the bay from Richmond to the tank farms and carries every grade of gasoline, diesel, and jet fuel. We had a main break out there, and, um, it was an environmental disaster, and it was , um, dangerous. And so I would hope, before any work's done on the edge of the bay, um, because that pipeline runs between Lagoon Road and the lagoon, that that pipeline is, um, a new pipeline is installed there through the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who hasn't spoken? Okay. All right, at this point, we'll bring it back to the council for further questions. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I do.
Cliff, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so in regards to the wind corridor, and we talked a little bit about this during our study session, so, is the wind corridor basically coming through what would be the recology property and ex, and extension? You know, so, I mean, you know, if the recology project, recology, um, extension is, is approved and it comes to the Geneva Avenue, uh, extension, is basically that, is that, that the wind corridor that, that's going out to Candlestick?
I think the, the simple answer is yes.
Okay, and then, so if that happens, the buildings are not going to be very tall. In fact, the southern part of the recology, um, uh, development would be a parking lot, correct?
I think that's, that's.
I mean, that's what they're kind of proposing right now?
That's the current site plan, but.
I know, we don't have a crystal ball, but just kind of what's already, what, what's been shown so far, and of course, things can change, but that's kind of what we're.
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so I just, you know, I'm thinking about that, and I appreciate you coming out here, and yeah, I think it's a, it is a great resource. Um, you know, the, the train station is also in the north, too. And so, um, it, you know, I'm just going to throw out kind of like a hypothetical to you, Lloyd, and, um, I mean, I, I would find it hard to believe that there would be any sustainability plan or, or a, an important, uh, plan to deal with, with climate change that, that kind of discards transit-oriented development. I mean, are, do you know of any, you know, plans that, that kind of say, no, that's not really that important?
Well, what, what you have and what the commission struggled with a little bit are a couple competing objectives. One, in terms of transit usage sustainability pushes the development to cluster up around the Bay Shore train station, um, closer to the freeway interchange, so pushes development north. You then have the biological impacts that also push development on the baylands north. And then you have the windsurfers and wanting to maintain a wind corridor as free of development as possible pushes development south. There's some times in planning, everybody can't get everything, so.
No, you're right about that, but you know, we've, we've also talked about potentially moving the station south, right, to the Geneva Avenue extension, and that, to me, is, is a better location for the train station, because now you can have a more variety of uses. Um, and it ties the bus for rapid transit with the multimodal station, the potential multimodal station.
And that seems, yeah.
So I mean, if that was to, if that was to occur, then that would leave that corridor fairly undeveloped. I mean, you know, there's still going to be some, right, but just not the, you know, very tall buildings, if that was to happen. I'm just, again, it's just kind of just putting it out there and, and trying to think for myself what potentially could be in regards to having your train station in the south and, and still maintaining that corridor. To a certain degree, you know, there still would be some development there, and I'm not saying no development, but not the, the large buildings. Because you have recology, I mean, you know, if recology is there, you, you can't.
Recology is there, and, and you'll, you'll see when we get to land use and, and look at distribution of land use, how these pieces come together in the commission's recommendation, um, which, in their recommendation pushes development west and to both sides of Geneva.
Okay. And, and then, you know, the pile driving, we talked about that, the, the, the council can designate the hours for the pile, pile driving, and we could say something like, like, no pile driving from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, or something like that, right?
You, you have, the city has standards right now that restrict hours of construction, and the EIR has mitigation measures saying you can't have pile driving every day of the week that's permitted currently by ordinance. So there are, there are some additional time restrictions, uh, suggested in the EIR.
Okay, those are suggested, but the, the council could also apply a different standard, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, um, okay.
See you, Ray.
Okay, you know, um, I'm, I'm not going to ask all my questions because it's late, but you know, I, I do want to make a, just a statement that I, you know, I've been listening to what you had to say, or what you've been saying over the, the hearings, uh, and what my council members have said, and things that I have questioned, you know, have asked questions about and wanting, you know, additional information. So, I, I've put together a little sheet of, uh, potential areas to receive additional information. Um, you know, but a couple things that, that Deb brought up that I, I've written in this thing, and I, and it, it took time to put it together, so I, I just did it this afternoon. But, you know, having the, the city, you know, come up with a, you know, a clear statement of our relationship with MID and what's their, you know, uh, you know, where they are in the process, I think, I think that needs to be clarified. You know, also, um, you know, just dealing with, you know, some of the, the soils that have come out of the Hunters Point, you know, um, chipyard, it's in this thing here. I mean, I, I want to make sure that, that the site doesn't have any radioactivity, radioactive soil, you know, and so how do we test for that? And, um, of course, who knows what was brought to the landfill back in the day? And so, I mean, for me, you know, having a, an extremely robust remediation action plan is the thing to do, right? You know, the site is cleaned, then it's going to be better for everybody. So, um, so yeah, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you putting all this effort into that. I think this is a really helpful document.
Yeah, and that'll be public record, too, you know, so they can get that information.
Okay, Terry?
Thanks, I wondered where this document came from or who it was by, or.
I wrote it this afternoon, in fact, I.
You didn't put your name on it.
Played like two minutes before our meeting today.
Okay, well, I, I'm glad I can put a, a name on it to look at it when, when we get to that point, and, and hopefully, I, I think that's a good idea of unanswered questions or, or areas that we have, um, questions on whether, uh, the information's adequate so that we can try to get staff working on some of those things. I think that's a good document to, um, put out there or to work on as a group or individually, however it may work, so, thank you.
Well, you know, you're right, Terry, I mean, I, there are some, I mean, it'd be nice to, to have staff to start, you know, gathering this information, say, prior to our deliberations, and that, and that was also part of it, so that when we do have our deliberations, we're, we got information and we're ready to, to.
On some of the questions, yes. Um, as far as the request for soils processing manifest, do we, would we have access to find out that list, or is that all information that's maintained with the soil processing people?
I'm going to have to get back to you. I, I believe we have access to that, but I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. Thank you, I think, I think that's really, um, important to know, at least from when we have records, what, what soils went there, and I don't know if that would eliminate some of the fear that the, the public has, but I think it would, would help in that method. Um, and then, the, um, EIR was done in 2010 or some, the, the baseline was 2010, and how much soil, because the, the baseline for that on how much soil is not what's presently on the ground, so, um, it'd be nice to know what the quantities of earth that would need to be moved and how the, are proposing to, if they have to take one side down, how to propose the staging from one side to the other for, for getting down to the base cap would be a good, good information to have. And with that, due to the late hour, I'll make a list of my questions.
Okay. Clerk?
Yeah, um, actually, Barbara, you will jog my memory, there was something I was supposed to ask earlier, and I forgot, I had it marked, too, and skipped right over it, but it had to do with the corrosive subsurface soils, and it's mentioned throughout different areas, and, and what type of corrosive are we talking about? I mean, because your corrosive could be an acid, it could be an alkaline.
I, I think she, it's alkaline, if I remember right. I, I'll, I'll check that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I'm curious, because one does metal and the other's doing concrete, says in, in here, saying it could be, so the corrosivity of, um, yeah, if we can get back to me on that, I'd, I'd like to know. And, um, one other thing in regards to the wind, you know, we actually have our own wind tunnel, uh, right here, in, uh, two miles away. You know, I have a business on Geneva Avenue, and I swear to God, man, that wind gets whipping down there, that's a developed area, and that's where the wind comes from for the windsurfers, and I see road signs going like this. I mean, brand-new ones, and I mean, you know, the road sign's only about this big. And that's, that's a lot of surface tension there that's causing that two-inch pole to wobble like that, and, uh, it's freaky, you know, to see it, but I mean, the, the wind really whips down there, and that is a developed area, so, you know, I know that you can put structures, you know, placed to enhance things, just like shadowing, you know, on, on the sunshadow, right? And so, maybe that's something, you know, further on down the line, that we look at how to do it, so, you know, you might be able to do things without, um, killing other things, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Um, great, well, we had a lot of, um, really good public comment and good questions, I took notes, and the two follow-up questions I'd like to ask city staff to look into, um, Deb Horn had mentioned the, the case law that she researched about the water supply issue, which we discussed at the last meeting. Um, I'd like to ask the city attorney to, to take a look at that case law and see if, um, you know, what, what the standard is for, you know, what level of water supply we need to identify at this point in the process. Um, and then as to the windsurfing, um, it's interesting you mentioned, Clark, that, you know, the buildings can actually enhance the wind. I'm not sure the windsurfers want that, because it sounds like they want no wind, or little wind for the beginner windsurfers. Um, but, you know, I'd like to flesh out that more about, you know, what, what is the standard, that, the study that was used, and, and whether that was the appropriate standard, because when I read the staff report, it sounds like, you know, the incremental changes in wind speed and turbulence would be undetectable, and so it wouldn't impair the windsurfer's ability at all, and so it, it didn't reach a level of requiring mitigation. So, you know, I want to make sure that we're using the right standard, and I, you know, I don't know, I'm not the expert in windsurfing, so we, we certainly need to look more into that. Unless there's any other questions, um.
Well, I mean, we are going to, the testimony and stuff like that, we're going to compile answers, because there was a lot of good.
Yeah, I know, and I.
Good information that was asked, and it was, you know, I took a lot of notes here, but I, I think we have it all on record, so we want to, you know, gather that data also, right?
Right, and if there's any questions that, you know, my council colleagues would like to ask that they haven't asked staff to, to research based on the public comment, I would encourage you to do, you know, similar to what Cliff did, to, to make a list and give it to city staff, because it's better to do that now while it's fresh in your head, and, um, you know, we, we don't want to have to revisit all these issues in the summer for the first time, you know, if we can start having staff look at these questions now, I think it'll be more efficient.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we are taking the list as these meetings go on.
Okay.
So there will be a, a response, probably a written response at one point, and there are, I guess that we may be having a night where there's just, uh, response to questions. are, I guess that we may be having a night where there's just response to questions.
Okay. So let's move on to item five, mayor and council matters. A is city council schedule. So we have a revised bayland schedule?
Not really.
I'm sorry, not the bayland schedule. Is it the, I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
Yeah, it is.
Is it the schedule of all the meetings or the baylands meeting?
No, it's, it's the bayland.
Okay.
And it's dated three sixteen. It's not changed from your last, the last time you discussed this.
Okay. So, and, and we received the, the poll for dates for deliberations for.
I didn't get any in my package.
June and July, right? So will staff be coming up with a proposed calendar for?
Well, as I think I wrote to you, what we're going to do is come back to you with a, a more fleshed out discussion of your deliberation process or options.
So we know how many meetings to schedule.
And then from there, we'll set a schedule.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So item six, written communications. Acknowledge receipt of written communications regarding the bayline, Brisbane Baylands project. So I'd like to acknowledge receipt of written correspondence that we've received between February twenty eighth and June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. We received correspondence from Danny Ames on March second, Sharon Boggs on March ninth, C. John Skiers on March ninth, C. C. Herman on March fourteenth, Nishijima and, or that's Dan Nishijima and Aurora Mubunga on March sixteenth, Biohabitats on March sixteenth, March sixteenth, some person who came from an email address that was called Brisbane R, or Brisbane resident anonymous, on March sixteenth, and Greenbelt Alliance on March sixteenth. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.